Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City of Campbell Planning Commission for October eighth, October eighth, twenty twenty four. We have a roll call.
Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Majewski?
Present.
Is she there?
Can you hear me?
Commissioner Majewski, are you there?
Can you hear me? I'm, I'm talking. Abstain, can you hear me?
Just message Andrew.
Abstain, can you hear me?
He's trying to speak. Yeah, well, I just, I just informed Andrew. I just let Andrew know. Well, it's an IT issue.
Why don't we go ahead and then if she can get, come in?
Yeah, we can note on the record that she is present in the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
But we weren't able to hear. So let's continue with the roll call. Commissioner Crade?
Here.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Present.
Pastor Campcorn?
Present.
Chair Sizer?
Here. Okay.
You didn't actually ask.
Commissioner?
Present.
Commissioner Strasky?
Present.
Thank you.
Just one. My name is Alan Zisser. I'm the present chair of the Planning Commission. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Any corrections? Any corrections? Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August.
August twenty seven.
August twenty seven?
Yes.
Okay, can we have a voice vote?
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Strasky?
Abstain.
Commissioner Crade?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Pastor Campcorn?
Aye.
Chair Sizer?
Aye. Okay, that minutes passed. Communications, agenda modifications, Director Eastwood, do you have any communications agenda modifications or postponements to notify?
Chair Sizer, planning commissioners, want to make sure staff has given you a number of desk items. I have a total of ten desk items you've received. The most recent was at five ten this afternoon. Most of those had to do with the second item tonight. One of them had to do with the first item. So just want to make sure you received all of those. Nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll open up to the public. This is a point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. So anybody would like to speak here or online on a non-agenda item? Anybody online? Anybody in the hall?
No one online.
Okay. Okay, I'll close that part. Okay, just a while repeat, maybe some of you didn't hear me. Yeah, we obviously have one item that is of great interest to a number of you. Can I, can I get a hand vote on how many people are here for this second item, the Chick-fil-A item that, okay, and how many are going to plan on speaking? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Even if you change your mind, you can still come up. There'll be an opportunity for people to, to, to speak. Before we start with our regular agenda items, I want to provide some information on how we will be conducting the meeting for each item. Each item, I will first announce the item and then ask for a staff presentation, after which the commissioners may have some questions for staff. After that, we will open the public hearing and first ask the applicant to speak if, if they're here and wish to speak, followed by any other members of the public. We will first have any public speakers physically present, then anyone attending via Zoom. Members of the planning commission may have questions for the applicant or any of the public speakers. Once we've received all public testimony, we will close the public hearing and the commission will then have discussion and a motion and decision based on the nature of the item. I, I will mention at this point, since we talk about a motion and decision, is the second item here, which most of you are here for, is a study session. So there is no resolution on this. There will be no vote tonight. This is a information session in which we review the applicant's application and ask questions and give the public a chance to, to make, make their inquiries and, and statements. So there, there's not going to be a vote tonight. We're here to find out more information and ask questions to both the staff and the applicant. Okay? As well as the, I assume we have somebody from the, the consultant. Okay. Before we start, commissioners, do we have any disclosures regarding items on our agenda tonight? I just visited both our sites. Okay. Anybody else?
I am a half a mile away from the Chick-fil-A site. That's more than five hundred feet, but I thought I would mention.
Okay.
I visited the Chick-fil-A site.
I've gone by it regularly because it's my neighborhood.
Anybody else? Okay, I, I visited both sites and, and the surrounding neighborhood. So let's begin with the first item. First item is fourteen thirty Westmont Avenue Site and Architectural Review Resolution, Resolution Roll Call Vote. Public hearing to consider the request of TDDG LLC on behalf of Yan Wen to allow the demolition of an existing single-family residence and the construction of a new approximately forty-three hundred and thirty-eight square foot two-story residence on property located at fourteen thirty Westmont Avenue. The application under consideration includes a site architectural review permit, file number PLN two oh two four dash one. Staff is recommending that the project be deemed categorically exempt under SEQA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Project planner is Tracy Tam. Tracy?
Thank you. Tracy Tam, project planner for the item before you tonight. And so the project site is located at fourteen thirty Westmont Avenue. It is located in the Phantomoff area neighborhood plan. And the project site is in approximately a little over ten thousand square foot lot with a zoning designation of R one nine and a general plan designation of low-density residential. So the applicant proposes to demolish the existing single-family, single-story residence and construct a new single-story, sorry, two-story, single-family residence that is approximately four thousand three hundred and thirty-eight square feet in size. And so a couple of years ago, if the commissioner recalls, SB nine was passed. And when SB nine was passed by the state, the bill asserted that also single-family needs to be proved ministerially and needs to be in compliance with objective standards. So subjective standards can no longer be held for single-family residences. And the bill also limited the ability for project alterations, given that it's not going to reduce the intensity of the project. Understanding that the SB nine bill clarified ministerial approval required for single-family staff is working on a code update to make sure single-family homes are subject to a ministerial process, which will be brought to the commission at some point in the future. And the project does indeed comply with the city's objective standards as noted in the staff report. So that includes the FAR limitations, lot coverage limitations, height limitations, and setback requirements. And staff did receive public comment on this item. And it's been provided in either the planning commission packet or the desk item memorandum. The first one of the concerns was related to the size of the proposed house and further extended to recently approved or constructed or projects under construction within the Santa Moss area, noting that the residences that have been approved and/or under construction are quite large. And staff, there was another comment that was submitted by an adjacent property owner. And in that public comment did include concerns related to the items you see on the screen here, so related to improvements on the adjacent property. The plans were showing some improvements on adjacent property. The item has been resolved. Those improvements are not under the purview of this project as it's all located on another piece of property. There are also concerns related to access of the property. In the plan set, you can see there are two driveways entering, providing access to the site. This matter has been resolved. The project before you tonight will be utilizing the driveway closer to Jasmine Court and to provide another direction. If you are looking at the house, it's the drive-in on the left-hand side. As the drive-on the right-hand side is closer to an easement. And then the public comment also included concerns related to obstructions to an existing easement. And the issue, the concern has been resolved as the applicant did suggest in the meeting facilitated by staff Friday before the meeting between property owners that there will be a physical demarcation of some sort, noting the easement area to reduce any kind of obstructions to that easement. In light of the last bullet point on the previous slide, staff is recommending the addition of a condition of approval to memorialize the applicant's solution to make sure the easement area remains to be unobstructed to the property in their rear. And staff also does recommend another condition of approval to ensure that the tree that's located in their rear yard is protected during construction activities, since that is not proposed for removal and it is a protected tree. And with that, staff recommends that the planning commission do adopt a resolution allowing the construction of the new two-story, single-family residence with the two additional recommended conditions of approval and find the project exempt under SEQA. And this concludes staff's presentation. Here for any questions you might have, the applicant team is here as well.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Do, we could do the SARC report.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure.
This was month ago or six weeks ago. This one came in. I think our primary view, well, my personal opinion was the comment about sort of the large entryway resonated with me. However, we have no objective standard preventing the homeowner from pursuing it. So there's no, I saw no reason to block this proposal. I think when we're looking at our single-family objective standards for the future, that's something I'd love to see more depth on, but this property complied with all of the standards that we had set. Commissioner Campcorn, you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Actually, not much from the SARC. You know, you basically, you know, did a good summary. My, my question, I guess, would be on the easement. You know, I didn't get enough information on the easement in the SARC, so maybe this is a good idea, a good time to.
Well, we can move from SARC question.
Right, I'm sorry, SARC wise, you know, nothing more. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Want to start down, Adam?
So just so I understand, the, the link to the SB nine fact sheet in the new packet is broken, but I found a copy of it. And so as I understand it, this is ministerial. It should not be coming before us, but we don't have a code update yet, so this is kind of formality and we don't really have any discretion here. We're just going through the motions.
More or less.
Okay. Do we know roughly when we're going to get that code updated?
I believe it will be sometime next year. With the recent passing of a lot of state bills will likely be sometime next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Tracy, I was just going to ask this. We already talked about that, the, the vertical entryway, which caught my eye right away in the report. And then I was happy to see that, that the written report really covered that. But just, and I know that's moved, this is moving to ministerial and is probably, you know, neither here nor there, but so the stamp, the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan right now discourages use of a two-story vertical element. So it's subjectively written, but there are some objectively written standards in, in the stamp. So if, if the stamp had written that two-story vertical elements are prohibited, would that be a different conversation than what we had?
Well, likely if it was objectively written in such a way that you suggest, then the idea is that it would be addressed prior to becoming to the commission. And so the idea there is that the proposal you see in front of you would not have a two-story element in front of you.
It probably wouldn't have it, you think?
Right, because then if it was objectively written, that's something that staff can enforce and, and which we would during the project review stage prior to being in front of the planning commission.
Well, let me put the staff on, on the spot then. My follow-up question is just, so we know that the people in stamp twenty years ago put a lot of work into putting in their, their area plan. And we know that they were discouraging this type of two-story vertical entryway. So did the staff work with this property owner and their architect? And, and I'm sure, I'm sure they're here, if I can ask them, but did you ask them why they couldn't perhaps change their design so it wasn't the two-story?
Well, so just staff can suggest design changes, especially if it's to satisfy a subjective standard. Staff certainly cannot impose
Right.
Application of a subjective standard.
Let me know, yeah.
In a prior iteration, the applicant was proposing a balcony on the second floor. And so with the staff suggestion of ensuring privacy is maintained, and it was a suggestion, not a requirement, the applicant did revise the proposal to remove the second story balcony. But as far as the two-story entryway element, maybe a better question of what the design intent for that is, and the applicant's architect is here as well.
Yeah, I realize it's better, but I just wanted, wanted to see if that came up, and obviously it did. That's good information, thank you. Just one final thing, and I don't, I don't know if this is nitpicking, and it's hard for me to navigate through the agenda, so I can't find the exact wording, but in, in one of our conditions of approval, the report says something about that it's not applicable, that the project will aid in harmonious development of the area. You say NA, not applicable. Then, then in another condition of approval, when we go through the conditions again, we say that it does, that it does aid in harmonious. There's a, there's a line in the, in the resolution that states that, and I was actually could bring that up. I'm glad you caught that. So, so harmonious, harmonious development is a subjective thing. At, at least you state that earlier. So in the resolution, there's a item three in the resolution that says that includes what is a subjective standard. So I was going to recommend we remove that.
Correct. Actually, it does need to stay within the resolution because it is a finding that things who made understanding that the finding is not applicable. But it is a finding within the site and architectural review permit part of the code. And so the resolution reflects all the findings that are in the code, whereas the staff report does provide an explanation of whether or not the finding is met. So it's, 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 it, it does need to remain in since it is still a component of our code, but we do want to recognize that it is not applicable because to your point, it is a subjective standard.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Tracy. Maybe?
No questions?
All good?
Um, yeah, I was going to just bring up that, that. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Commissioner Campcorn?
Thank you, Chair. So if I can restate my question. So the easement seems to have been on the next door property and then part of it, I guess, came on this property. Is that because of a tree that was planted or?
So the easement is there for a public service easement, emergency vehicle access easement, private ingress and egress easement. And I believe there is a private sanitary sewer easement as well, if I recall. But there are, the, there is a flag lot towards the back. So where you see the easement crossing over, it does apply on both properties. And I presume the, the lot was, just sort of some background, the lot was prior one large lot. And back in, I believe it was twenty seventeen or so, the property owner at the time had come in to request the, a lot split. And so that's why you see the lot in the front, which is the application for any of you tonight, and then a flag lot, which provides a driveway towards the rear part of the lot that was split.
Sure.
And so there are two or three trees that are within the access corridor, if you will, the pole part of the flag lot. And so my understanding is that, or I, I presume, just given the way that the lot was split, the way that the easement is laid out, it was to save the trees that are in front. And so the easement was applied to the front, a part of the easement was applied to the front part of the lot to provide enough access to the rear part, the rear lot, I should say.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
So just to reaffirm the, the, the issue with the next-door neighbor has been totally resolved, right?
Right, as far as I know, there hasn't been any other public comments I've received, you know, other issues.
You have two addition, you have amendments, two amendments to the resolution that would be required to support that, right?
Correct. One, one condition of approval is to memorialize the project proponents' suggestion to include some kind of physical demarcation, so the easement area is not blocked, therefore maintaining unobstructed access to the rear lot. And the second condition of approval is to ensure that the tree protection measures are put in place to make sure the tree in the rear yard is protected during construction.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just, I don't want to dwell on this, but you know, I'm going to be a little pushback on the, on the harmonious development. So you, you state the project, you say it's not applicable. This item is subjective and therefore cannot be used as a basis for the decision. But you're saying that we still need to include it in the resolution. What if we don't agree that it's contributes to the harmonious development?
Maybe I can address that. I think that I think you, the, the commission understands that we can only apply objective standards. I think another way of looking at this is that since our hands are tied, if it complies with the objective standards, then by virtue of, of the, of state law, we are bound to find that it is harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood.
I stand.
And that's, that's a lawyerly way of, of putting. And that's, that's a lawyerly way of putting things. The, the practical is that our, our code does require that finding. If you don't make that finding, that's gonna put the applicant in a potentially difficult situation. If somebody wanted to bring an action and it could just, it could, could just be a mess. The, the ultimate outcome would still be the project would be approved.
Right, okay, all right. There are no more questions. I'm gonna close, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close that portion and open it up for public comment. The applicant, if the applicant wishes to speak, they have five minutes. Can you state, can you state your name?
Yeah, my name is Dee. I'm a project designer and good evening, the Commissioners and all the staff. Thanks, Tracy, for very clear, explained the project. So I don't have much thing to say besides just accept that two condition of approval. We will work on that part with the planning departments and try to get that through. And then I'm also here to answer any like questions for like anybody who have, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item? You got two minutes.
Commissioners, good evening. My name is Doug Rice. I'm the owner of fourteen forty Westmont, the neighboring property. I sent you a letter. I met with Tracy and I appreciate planning department assisting us in having the meeting last week and achieving some of the resolutions that you saw up here regarding the site. I want to make it clear, we have no objections to the development. We have no objections to the design. That's not our concern. That's the property owner's business and your decisions. We do have one issue here, and that is the access to the property. We've had a problem and we've made it clear to the city. They had used our easement and our property to access their property, both the front and the backyard as recently as today. And that continues. And we would ask that a third item be added to the resolution restricting access or memorializing the access via which driveway they are going to use and prohibiting the access via the other driveway. That is the only thing we have an objection to, and that's for our protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. For the
For the gentleman. Thank you. I just want to be clear, when you say they use your easement. So if I'm standing on the street looking at the project, you are the house to the right.
That is correct.
Okay, and then my understanding was this easement is for the flag lot in the back.
That is correct.
So do you also own that flag?
That is, that is fourteen forty Westmont, yes, sir.
Oh, so, so the, so the fourteen forty is behind the project. It's not the house immediately to the right.
That's correct. That was something, when they provided the project site pictures on their plan, they omitted fourteen forty and they omitted the pictures of the easement and our driveway. So I don't know if they corrected that or not, but interestingly enough, in their site picture, they have a car parked on our driveway, on our property. So this is, this is longstanding. There have been four letters written. We have asked that it stop. And as of today, there were three pickup trucks in the backyard of the property at fourteen thirty and all of them used our property to get back there. We found auto parts there, we found garbage. This all started when there were eleven cars parked on our lot in the back underneath our trees. So we've been at this now almost a year. And we would like it memorialized to stop this practice so that we can, once and for all, have it taken care of.
Thank you.
So I have a question that must, might seem obvious. So there is room for them to use their property, to get on the property and do whatever they need to do. They don't need to go on your property, is, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And, and in your, in your communication with them, what has been the response in terms of not using your property?
Well, the response has always been, no, we're not going to use it, or it's not our responsibility, or it's not our people, or whatever you choose to use as a response, but it continues to this day.
Okay, okay. So I, I'd like to ask the staff if we, if they have some advice on how to deal with this.
Well, I think the physical marking of the easement area will assist. Presently, if you do look at the street view or aerial view, it's not clear, it's not clear where the easement area is. And frankly, it looks like one large driveway. And so it is, it is difficult to tell. I'm sure some of you have visited the site. It is, it looks like a driveway. There isn't any other markation that there is an easement. So I think the inclusion of some kind of physical distinction on the site, even whether that be like striping, no parking, no obstruction, what have you, or different paving, obviously meeting fire department standards for the rear property so they can actually get, you know, it's treated so it can support the weight of a fire trap going on to the rear property. But I think that will assist because it'll indicate to the front owner where the boundaries of that property is and to make sure that they stay clear. Now, I believe the items that Mr. Doug Rice has raised, it seems like there, there is a project across the street on, also on Westmont that is undergoing construction. And it's, actually, the commission has seen that prior, I believe it was sometime in twenty twenty-two, in which that was in front of you. And that project, I believe, is towards the tail end. They've been in construction for the last couple of months, probably even more than that. And so that project will be completed at some time, I believe, early. Well, I suppose the applicants can speak to that, but, but I believe that project is getting close to completion. So, so it seems like the vehicles parking along the, I don't know if there's something that can be done during construction that the owner is amenable to, understanding that now is not physically clear of where the easement area is. If there's some kind of resolution that the property owners can work together, so there could be some more demarcation. I understand there's fencing on the property now put up by Mr. Doug Rice. But I don't know if there's other solutions that the two adjacent owners can go through.
If, if I may, the issue here is not just the easement. The issue here is they've been using our property to access the back. The, the backyard was used as a makeup area and a storage area for the project across the street. The applicant was a subcontractor on that project. So they used our driveway, including using heavy equipment, including lifts and various things, forklifts, to get to his backyard to store building materials and other supplies for that project. As I said, we've written four letters, all have been copied to the city. As I said, today, I drove out there, the driveway is damaged. The dirt is everywhere because they're parking in the dirt in the backyard. We would just like it memorialized within this, that that will not be in access in the future from this point forward, once they're approved. Okay, thank you.
Anybody have it?
I do have one more question. Thank you. I have a question for the attorney, however. Thank you. Is this the time to ask questions for the attorney?
Well, does anybody else have a question for Doug?
Let me ask, yeah, Mr. Rice, just, maybe Tracy, but there, there is a fence, a wire fence right now off of Westmont that's kind of showing a driveway or something. What, what, on what property is that?
That is the boundary line. We have a fifteen-foot wide property line all the way from the back wooden fence coming forward, all the way to the public right of way. That fifteen feet is our property.
And that, and that fence is showing that.
That fence is, is as close as I could make it to that property line.
All right.
And
Just curious.
Yes, that's why that fence is there.
Okay.
Because they were going into their backyard via our driveway with heavy equipment.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was gonna, nobody else has questions for Doug? I was gonna see if we could get something from the applicant. Would the applicant like to respond in terms of offering a solution to this problem?
Yeah, definitely. I was, I can propose for, for him the option that we can just put the fan right at front of the, just across from the garage, just, I mean, we can block the whole driveway so nobody can park from now on to the, to the construction start.
When you say block the driveway, whose driveway you block?
I mean, right now, if you look at the, I don't know that it can see here, but it just, here is the existing garage from the, for the property existing house. I don't know if Tracy's, you can view it. So, yeah. So I think, I just proposed right there from the, on the corners of the property line. And we can just block the whole thing from, from the corner over the left and then hook the fan right into the, to the building. So that way, no one will be able to go into that driveway in that easement. So anything that they can park is on the, on the left side from, from the corner of the building to the left.
Yeah, are you proposing that you'll, you'll handle doing that?
What's that?
Are you proposing that you will handle doing that?
Yes.
Okay, so we can put that in as a condition of approval? Okay, but we're, we're gonna vote on it tonight, so I'd like to make sure that we have a, have something in the resolution that makes that a condition. What do you think?
So long as the motion speaks to that.
Okay.
Great. Let's do it.
Let's do it, okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this? Okay, I'll, I'll close, I'll close that and quickly ask for comments.
Supportive of the motion, nothing to add from this SARC report.
I'm supportive of the motion as well.
Mr.? Yeah?
On principle, I don't think it's my place to have any particularly, it shouldn't be before us. And I understand there's, there's issues involved, but I don't think it's our book. But I don't feel that this should be coming before us. It won't be, so I'm just gonna go to approve it.
I, I would just say as a comment, I know you're hung up on this ministerial review thing, but it hasn't been done yet. And in effect, we're doing the ministerial review, from what I see. So, you know, there's always, ministerial review also comes up with issues, so, and then hopefully are resolved. So we, we're acting as the ministerial.
I am glad that they were able to negotiate this through staff. And I think that figuring out the issue with the easement is very reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, generally fine, yeah. It's too bad the, the vertical entryway is a little bit out of character and but, I mean, we don't have very much leeway and, and generally, it's a nice, you know, nice design, good project, so I think approval, yep.
Thank you. I actually have a question for the attorney on this item.
Oh, our attorney, okay.
Yes, so, you know, for disclosure, I'm a civil engineer. I deal with boundaries and this type of projects all the time. So when I see the boundary on this project and hear the word easement, if somebody has an easement over your lot, that means that you cannot construct anything on that to, you know, to sort of keep them from using the easement back and forth. But, but you should be able to go over your own property, transverse over that easement to get to other places. So I'm not sure if it's legal to say, we'll just block it off. So the property owner itself can't use the easement portion of his lot, not the easement portion on the back lot, but the triangular picture that we saw. You know, can, can we do that? Can we, you know, unless property changes hands?
I understand your concern and the idea did occur to me since I don't know that we know whether this is an exclusive easement or one that where in fact the dominant tenements that still has rights of ingress and egress over it. Without looking at the easement language itself, we don't know that. It could be a shared rights of ingress, ingress and egress over these. Having said that, however, yes, I think as a condition of approval, we, I mean, we could even, in theory, I suppose, require them to require a change to the rights of ingress and egress as a condition of approval. So yes, I, I, I think you can require them to block it off.
I see. Okay. Okay, well, with that, then I would also be supportive of a motion. That will, you know, grant that right.
Chair, can we use this as an opportunity to test Cory's?
Okay, sure. I don't know if she's here, right?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Would you like to comment on this? Cory?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We hear you. You gotta speak up a little bit.
Okay, yeah, I don't need to comment. I'm glad you can hear me. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna need to figure out how to get you to.
She said she didn't need to comment.
Yeah, I know. For the, anything future that I, we need to get her to be able to be heard better. Okay.
Can you try that one more time? Cory, I just adjusted your audio.
You hear me? Testing. Testing, testing, testing.
Getting better.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of approving this project. I know we had one letter that was expressing concern about large houses, but we, we're, this is in accordance with, with our code and state law. And so it fulfills all the requirements necessary. There is nothing, I actually took a look at this Santa Mas area plan. And the, the plan accommodates large houses. So there's nothing in the, in the, in the plan that doesn't do that because of the, the way the objective standards were. So I'm in favor of that and I, and I would like to ask for a motion that includes three conditions of approval.
Well, let's see. I'll make a motion that the Campbell Plan Commission adopt a resolution on offensive attachment while approving a site and architectural review permit PLN twenty twenty-four dash one to allow a demolition of existing single-family residences in construction in approximately four thousand three hundred and thirty-eight square foot two-story, single-family residence at fourteen thirty Westmont Avenue and finding the project had a going exempt under CCL with the additional conditions of the two conditions that staff brought up and with the, with the third extra condition of a, how to phrase this, of fence, a proper demarcation between the two driveways that the owner of fourteen thirty will take care of.
Second.
Network, staff, okay?
And, and, and did you include that the applicant cannot use the neighbor's property?
Yeah, with the stipulation that the applicant of fourteen thirty cannot use the neighbor's property easement, cannot violate that easement.
How's that sound?
Network.
So if I understood the condition, so there's the two staff recommended, recommended condition, one with the demarcation of the easement area, the second one being the tree protection standards.
Yes.
And then the third one, I, from the discussion earlier, I heard that it's a voluntary condition, or not voluntary, but rather the applicant is agreeing to the condition of approval to add construction fencing. So vehicular, like vehicles cannot be accessing the property in the rear during
Just keep the vehicles violating the owner's property.
Yeah, yeah, cannot, cannot access the neighbor's property, the, what is it, fourteen forty? Fourteen forty Westmont cannot, cannot access and
Fourteen thirty cannot access.
No, it's, yeah, fourteen thirty cannot access fourteen forty at any time, there's, right?
Okay, I, so I guess Okay, um I so I guess point of point of clarification, because I earlier heard it was during construction. The fencing, they they said that they can put up the fencing tomorrow to ensure that construction vehicles or reduction of vehicles entering fourteen forty's properties reduce, but here I'm hearing something else. That sounds like the driveway.
We don't, we uh the the owner of fourteen forty doesn't want any access on his property perpetuity of, yeah, from from those the ones across the street or the ones that are gonna build fourteen thirty. So uh at any time, at any time, through completion of the project. Does that sound right?
Okay. So with the physical barrier, the only the only concern that I have there is that I am afraid it may cause um consternation with the fire department, because that easement area is an emergency access for the fire department. And so while there is fencing for the rear property further along, but that initial point of entry doesn't have any kind of fencing, so to speak. And so I'm afraid that if the condition of approval is worded that fencing needs to be in that area, I'm afraid that might cause issues for the fire department and obstruct their access in some manner.
Is it gonna obstruct the access to?
Oh, hold on a break. Yeah, go ahead. Could you turn that thing on?
I just uh thing is that right now, I think is that the the neighbors, one, one, four, zero, is concerned about their the construction site on the other side of Westmont that the people park on that site. So right now, like tomorrow, we can actually fence that that area. So the construction people from across the street, they cannot park it. I think the owner of one, four, three, zero never parked in there right now. So the house has been vacant uh ready to construction, so. But I that that's what we're gonna propose, because I think the neighbor is just concerned about like, you know, ten or or five cars just parked there every day and he doesn't wanna see that.
He has he has access to that because the owner of one, four, three, O is giving him access?
I just sometimes it just they see the lots vacant, that's why they they probably park over there. That's why uh tomorrow, we can actually fence it and then so stop them parking there. But I think it's yeah, Tracy's is right, if you put in the con- the condition of approval for a block that access is, I don't think is uh gonna work for us down the road.
You know, Director, i- is this something that can be referred to the to the building department?
I'm gonna suggest, and again, to remind the commissioner on this, is a ministerial process. So what I'm hearing from the applicant is a proposal to put fencing in, I'm hearing for during construction to impede the parking and use of the easement. So I would suggest, consistent with his proposed action, to require a condition to put in temporary fencing during construction. It'd be reviewed and approved by the farm marshal and staff that impedes access to the the easement to the back property.
That sounds good. Okay, that's that's our motion. Wasn't that easy? And we we have a second. Okay, um can we have a vote? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Meduski?
Aye.
Commissioner Stravsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Professor Kamcar?
Aye.
Chair Sizer?
Aye.
Okay, that that passes. All right, thank you for your patience. We're gonna take a three-minute break, um the planner sets up. Do we have to? Sure, let's get rid of the way. Planning Commission back to order. This is a study session, this is a study session is a meeting of planning commission is held to discuss specific planning topics or preliminary development proposals. No formal action or decision may be made by the planning commission. You're probably asking, well, when will that happen? So depending on what what information comes out in this meeting, there will be some period in which there may be some revisions to the plans or whatever that the applicant wants to make and uh and the and the planners want to work with them on to bring it back for formal approval or or not. And that could be, my understanding, somewhere between two and four months. Okay, so at the best, the end of the year, more likely in the January, February timeframe. So like I told I told Daniel I wouldn't hold him to that, but that's see if the different timeframes they're probably working with. This is two oh six oh South Bascom Avenue, uh former Denny's location, proposed Chick-fil-A. Study session to review a proposal to construct an approximately six thousand square foot non-drive-through quick-service restaurant with associated site parking and landscaping improvements on property located at two oh six oh South Bascom Avenue, the former Denny's location, file number PLN two oh two four dash one, one, two. Project planner is Daniel Farmer. Uh before I turn it over to Daniel, commissioners, tell me if this is a more efficient way or a less efficient way to do this. So in terms of when we get the questions, um we'll do the usual where people take turns with questions. But I I'm thinking that uh we all probably have a lot of questions and they might be overlapping. So that when one commissioner asks a question and gets an answer, and if there's a follow-up, that another commissioner can like ask at the same time at that, so we don't have to go and kinda, you know, go back and forth. So if you think that's a good idea?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Daniel, take it away.
Actually, Community Development Director Eastwood, so really quickly, just to set the table. So a couple of things, I just wanna read in the record and introduce Daniel and also our economic development manager, Leslie Parks, who's here. So I know the city has received a lot of comments and interest on this item, and I know council members have received a lot of feedback from residents. I do just wanna read in the record a little bit on how we got here. To my understanding, several years ago, twenty twenty, there was a proposal on the site. Uh it was approved by the planning commission, did go to the city council on appeal, was denied. I started with the city about uh mid twenty twenty-one, I'll I'll say somewhat, sometime after I started, Chick-fil-A did come back to the city. I'd say circa late twenty-one, sometime in twenty twenty-two. They were interested in the site again and had proposed a new model that did not include a drive-in. And that did restart the conversation, so Chick-fil-A was re-interested in the site. I'd say since then, uh staff has reached out at least once or twice to talk to Chick-fil-A about the status of their application. And I know our economic development manager has had a few conversations with their staff. So just wanna make sure in the record, uh because I know there's been a lot of questions of how this application has come back, that we have some facts on how we got here. Tonight, for the presentation, the majority will hear from Daniel Famas and your planner on how the proposal meets Campbell's Code's general plan and requirements. Uh at the end of presentation, uh our economic development manager, Leslie Parks, is also here. The city does have a new economic development plan that was adopted. This site was identified as a site in the plan and Leslie can provide a bit of perspective on the economic development plan and how it relates to this site. Uh with that, I'll hand it over to Dan.
Great, thank you, Rob. Thank you. Good evening, Commission. Been quite a while, I think. So this is a study session to consider a lending application for twenty sixty South Bascom Avenue. This is the format of Denny's site for a Chick-fil-A proposal. So the city currently does have a formal application for this project. However, as staffs urging, we did request that Chick-fil-A pay for the preliminary application process as well, which is being done concurrently with the formal application. And that allows an opportunity for the commission and community to have some level of review of this application earlier in the process than you would normally see it. So that is where we are. So this is a study session and has been noted, no decision will be made. It's an opportunity for the commission to ask questions, for you here to public comment, and then for you to provide your feedback to the applicant team. In terms of this project site, so this is located at twenty sixty South Bascom. So this is approximately one acre property that is at the southeast corner of Bascom and Royal Seco Drive. It is currently developed with a restaurant that was formerly occupied by the Denny's for a good, I believe, three decades. The property is now currently zoned and within our general plan as neighborhood commercial NC. And as Rob mentioned, that there was a proposal for a drive-through Chick-fil-A, forty-five hundred square foot drive-through proposal that was approved by the planning commission but denied on appeal by the city council in twenty twenty. Uh the proposal that's currently being considered now is construction of about six thousand square foot non-drive-through restaurant. So this is a format that the applicant has deployed in other communities, most recently in Emeryville and Burbank. Just a quick notes on the site layout. So this is the current site plan that has been submitted to the city. So this show is the building at the corner of Bascom and Royal Seco Drive. And there's a lot of material in the staff report, so I'm not gonna go through all this verbatim, so otherwise we'll be here for quite a while. But just highlighting some notes, so this property does reflect the city standards for the neighborhood commercial zoning district. So you got deep setbacks fifteen feet from both the Royal Seco Drive and Bascom Avenue. It also reflects the city's image street improvements for Bascom Avenue, so that's an enhanced streetscape design. The property, the building is shown kind of interiorly oriented with the entrance here at the south, a small patio offset. As noted in the staff report, this does conflict with some general plan policy that does really encourage that build needs to be oriented to the public street and particularly in regard to intersection corners, and there's some discussion of how that can be improved. So here we have illustrations, both the what's in the current packet as well as materials that were transmitted to you by email about several days. Still a fairly simple box. There has been some additional articulations, some additional wood cladding, but highlighting what Chick-fil-A has done in other communities. It clearly is possible to make these types of restaurants much more engaged into the public realm. So for instance, that patio, instead of being just offset to the side, it could be along Bascom Avenue to really provide a sense of vibrancy that does further general plan policy. Uh similarly, the design approach as shown currently in the plan set and as somewhat upgraded on the bottom left. These are still fairly simple, purpose-built boxes, certainly a lot of room for improvement. If the commission does want to engage in some level of discussion on the design approach, we can pull this graphic back up. So this shows various iterations of Chick-fil-A's throughout the country demonstrating that they can either build different designs or at least are willing to occupy buildings that do reflect different architectural approaches. We can use this slide as an opportunity for the commission to highlight certain elements, say, you may feel desirable or those that are not, and that's feedback that we're hoping that Chick-fil-A will take into account. In terms of land use considerations, this property is now zoned in neighborhood commercial, so this is a change from twenty twenty. At that point in time, the property was general commercial. So the property was functionally downzoned to neighborhood commercial as part of last year's general plan. So this is one of the more significant changes of the general plan that actually came out of the general plan advisory committees of the GPACs preferred land use map, uh shown here as an excerpt. So on the east side of Bascom Avenue, a very large strip of properties was redesignated from general commercial to neighborhood commercial. And then actually on the other side, the the flip side actually happened, those properties were actually upzoned to commercial corridor or mixed use. So you actually have a pretty significant dynamic along Bascom Avenue where one side is significantly lesser intensity, the other side's higher intensity. So the intent there from the GPAC and planning commission and city council to redesignate these properties, they know neighborhood commercial was to have a zoning district that was a bit more sensitive to the budding residential uses. So the neighborhood commercial zoning district has more restricted development standards. It also has different locational requirements for some uses, and it's also more restrictive to some uses, and particularly those that can impact neighborhoods. So I here, the most significant is actually neighborhood, a zoning district does not allow for drive-throughs at all. So Chick-fil-A could not actually propose this today. That would be something that would not even be accepted by the city. And then additionally, the way the proposal is classed on classified from a land use perspective has also been changed. So last year, the city council at the planning commission recommendation adopted what was commonly known as our streamlining ordinance that sought to expedite some commercial uses. So as part of that update, the definitions for restaurants were updated and changed. Before, there was a specific definition for a fast-food restaurant and a cafe, and those are effectively combined into this new concept called a quick-service restaurant. So the quick-service restaurant really deals with restaurant operations where you don't have standard sit-down service. So you're ordering at a counter or an app, you don't have any waitstaff, reservations aren't typically taken, there's a lot of to-go food. And typically, that includes restaurants that the public generally understands as traditional fast-food restaurants, fast casual restaurants, cafes, and what's sometimes known as fine casual restaurants. An example of that would be the Akki Calmex in downtown. So all those different types of categories are now considered quick service. And so that is what the proposal is actually technically being classified as under our new paradigm. And then within the neighborhood commercial zoning district, a quick-service restaurant is actually conditional use. And that's differentiated from the general commercial where it's a administrative conditional use. So that had been in a general commercial, a a Chick-fil-A actually would have been just an action approved of by the community development director. In terms of traffic, so in advance of this application, the city did accept funds from Chick-fil-A to begin preparation of a traffic impact analysis that was prepared by a traffic consultant hired by the city. And so I'll go through that a little bit. We do have the traffic consultant on the line, as should you have any technical questions. So there are several key areas studied. The first is the vehicle miles traveled concept. So this is a new method to evaluate potential impacts of land use changes and new development at a bit more holistic regional level. So as not to really overlay burdens in smaller applications, city council's VNT policy has several categories of City Council's VMT policy has several categories of land use proposals and development proposals that are screened out, meaning that they are presumed to have no impact and there's no need for any further formal study. So a Chick-fil-A restaurant, being a kind of quick service restaurant, is classified as a local serving retail. And those types of activities are screened out from formal VMT analysis under fifty thousand square feet. And that really has implications to do with impacts under CEQA. So moving forward, level of service, which is a gauge of the delay experienced by drivers at intersections. In the past, particularly when Chick-fil-A and the former Internet in-and-out proposal were considered, impacts of level of service actually had ramifications on CEQA, which created a bit more complicated process. While that is no longer the case, the city's general plan as well as our obligations with the BTA still do require that we evaluate proposals against level of service standards. And as shown here, this proposal would actually have no impact in both the short-term and long-term conditions that are known as background plus project and cumulative plus project here, shown on the combined table. In terms of turning lane queuing, so this was actually an issue that had been reviewed back in twenty twenty, and of course, it's here again. So the applicant's, the consultant's review looked at the turning movements into the site and found that there would be an operational impact of vehicles moving southbound on Bascom Avenue, wanting to take a left at a left turn pocket into the site. That turn pocket is a little too short to actually accommodate the stacking capacity, the stacking that would be expected from turning vehicles. So you would actually have some vehicles that would back into Bascom Avenue. And so the TIA recommends that there would be signs directing drivers to the next intersection at Apricot Avenue when there is no capacity to make that left turn. So vehicles would go to the next intersection at Apricot. Now, Apricot also would be impacted in a similar manner. And so the TIA provides a couple of different options. First is simply expanding the length of the turning lane. Now, that's the most expedient measure, however, it would remove four trees along the city's median landscape violence. And as noted in the staff report, preservation of such trees and landscape in the median islands is heavily encouraged, and those removals are actually not supported by our Public Works Department, particularly because to what degree these impacts will actually manifest is not entirely known. The TIA also recommends adjusting signal timing to see there's a mechanism to actually get vehicles to move out of that turning lane more quickly. However, in practice, that still would require actually observing vehicle movements in the field and adjusting signal timing as necessary. So as discussed in the staff report, this could be addressed in a couple of different ways, but principally looking at a deferred street improvement agreement that would effectively obligate a property owner to actually do that turning lane expansion in the future, if only if it's actually found to be absolutely necessary and the city engineer determines it to be appropriate. Additionally, the TIA included what's known as a traffic infusion residential environment analysis, tire analysis. And tire analysis seeks to understand kind of the subjective impact of additional vehicle traffic within residential neighborhoods relative to the existing number of cars that go through those neighborhoods. So as shown on the table there, the tire analysis found that there would be no significant impacts to the reviewed streets, and those were Campbell Avenue, Aurora Seco, and El Soyo. However, again, traffic studies have a lot of assumptions, so looking at the potential impacts, if this data is wrong, the staff report does talk about the ability for the city to proactively accept funds that could actually be used to build out speed bumps within the streets. It's allowed by the city's traffic calming policy. That would require the neighbors actually go through a process that's already been qualified and approved by the City Council to actually seek that type of improvement within their neighborhood. And if the City Council, and if the proposal actually does satisfy the criteria that has been set by the City Council, there would be funds to pay for that, so that the taxpayers at large wouldn't be obligated to do so. Now, if those funds ultimately prove not to be needed, under the Mitigation Fee Act, those funds will be returned to the applicant within five years. Additionally, we also did hear some concerns regarding turning movements at the Aurora Seco driveway. Staff report discusses some ideas there of how you could restrict right turns. There are some examples in Campbell, physical blockage within the roadway or within the apron or signage. Again, to some degree, there is always going to be some drivers who are not going to abide by certain restrictions, but that is really reflective of any type of restriction here. Unfortunately, there is really no mechanism to close off a driveway entirely. It is necessary for delivery vehicles and emergency vehicles and trash collection vehicles. And then just briefly touching upon neighborhood compatibility, as discussed at length in your staff report, the general plan does have a number of policies that speak to neighborhood compatibility. Principally, Action LU two A talks about using the development review process to actually evaluate the potential impacts of development proposals to neighborhoods. And so the staff report does go into ideas of how noise, litter, lighting, glare, public safety and other issues can be addressed. These are very common issues with a lot of development applications to which the city has much experience in addressing. And with that, I will hand it over to Leslie to speak on the economic development implications of the proposal.
Thank you, Daniel. Good evening, Chairs and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Leslie Parks. I have been the city's Economic Development Manager for the past two years. I have also worked in the field of economic development for over thirty years, hard to admit, for many cities such as San Jose, Mountain View, Redwood City, San Carlos, Palo Alto, and Burlingame. I'm here tonight to provide some additional insight and information for the commission. There are important fiscal and economic considerations that guide, but not necessarily drive development and planning policies and help ensure the overall economic sustainability of communities. Many cities align their general plan policies with economic development goals, as was noted in the staff report. The city of Campbell also has a new economic development plan that also addresses the city's economic sustainability. Commercial uses like Chick-fil-A, shopping centers, retail stores, and non-retail businesses add value to a city by generating significant sales tax from sales and also provide jobs. In addition, retail is an amenity that is desired by many communities. Small cities that are built out and have limited or no large retail store space rely predominantly on sales tax revenue that is generated by sales from smaller businesses. Every business counts. A final consideration is that the former Denny's site has been vacant for over three years. I regularly monitor retail activity and markets to seek new tenants for that space, but there has been very little interest in a building that size and a site as large as the Denny's. That may change in a few years, but it's difficult to predict retail and real estate markets. And with that, that is the conclusion to my economic development perspective.
So we are available to take any questions, and then after you open the public hearing, we do have the applicant team here as well. We have a few words to say, and we'll also be able to take your questions.
Thank you, Daniel. I just commented that the package was very comprehensive. Appreciate the work put in on it. And the transportation consultant package is challenging. Okay, so with that, I will start with Mr. Field.
Going back to the City Council's rejection in twenty twenty, the packet cited parking concerns, which I assume we cannot legally weigh in this round because of the change in California state law, is that?
That's correct. So this is within the eighty twenty ninety seven area, but there is no parking standard anymore. No, if there were, it would exceed it. There's more parking than would have been.
But part of the rationale at the time for City Council was that was something they could block the project on, which we could not now.
Correct. Parking is no longer a consideration under law. You cannot apply a minimum parking standard.
Right. Okay, just wanted to clarify that one. Okay, the second one, there was citing a traffic concern. I didn't see how different the numbers were back in twenty twenty with the full drive-through. Did that significantly change any of the VMT scores? Like, was there a qualitative reason the traffic concerns were sort of used as rationale to block in twenty twenty?
Unfortunately, I was not the planner on that original application, but my understanding, it had to do much more with drive-through element of the proposal and a lot of the queuing and circulation issues.
Got it. And just double clicking on this, maybe this is a question for the consultants about parking, or sorry, about traffic. But there were certainly lots of public comments specifically about Aurora Seco, but it like didn't budge in the VMT reporting, and I just sort of would love any expansion on like that specific, given so many of the public comment had come up about it. I'd love any more, you know, explanation on that.
Mark, do you want to touch on the tire analysis of the analyzed streets?
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. So my name is Mark Spencer, I'm principal with W Trans, and we're responsible under the city's direction for preparing the traffic analysis. The question that just came up is regarding the residential street analysis that was conducted. What happens in that situation is we look at how much daily traffic is added and also how much daily traffic is currently using each of these particular streets, with whatever uses there may be, including cut-through traffic or other uses in addition to the residences that are on that street. And then what we do is we say, okay, let's take a look at how much is going to be added, and is that going to be a a measure, not measurable, but a noticeable effect? That's really what the tire index, that traffic infusion on residential environment is based on. We had made an assumption, and it's based on the traffic volumes that are out there today in terms of traffic patterns and also what the city's traffic model projects, that about two percent of the traffic from this development would use each of those local streets. And from the east side overall, there's a higher amount of traffic that would be coming to the Chick-fil-A from San Jose and elsewhere. But a lot of that would be coming on Hamilton or other streets. So based on the increase on the local streets, it doesn't tip the balance for what would be considered an impact. It doesn't mean there would not be an increase and that people would not say, oh, you know, okay, we have another eighty vehicles a day on these streets. And when you live there, okay, anybody that seems out of place or additional vehicle or whatever, you're going to notice that. So for example, on Aurora Seco, currently, there's about eleven, twelve hundred trips a day that use the street. The project would result in an increase, as I said, of about another eighty vehicles. You need about almost three hundred, you need about two ninety to sort of tip the balance in to make it where people say, hey, now I'm really starting to notice something. That's what the increase in the tire analysis would show. Similarly, on Campbell Avenue, there's over two thousand vehicles a day. El Soyo is a smaller street, there's only four hundred trips per day on that street. It would be much more sensitive there, but also, you know, which means it doesn't take a lot to notice that difference. But in each case, it's not tipping the balance. What Daniel had explained, and it's in the staff report, is that although it doesn't satisfy the technical criteria for an impact, you could still say, you know what, we could look at some traffic calming measures or things that discourage traffic from moving through these streets. And some of the comments in the staff report indicate that there's concern about the volumes and speeds on these streets today. I hope that addresses your question. If not, I can expand further.
You mentioned what the threshold value was, and you're kind of figured out there a little bit. You talked about the noticeable impact.
Yeah, I'll try and speak up a little bit, so hopefully y'all can hear me okay.
Did you hear the question?
Yeah, I believe the question was, can I go over what the threshold values are? For the residential streets, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to do that, and it's, I don't know what page it is in the packet. Daniel, you might want to help with that. I'm actually looking at the local copy that I have on my screen. Okay, so the threshold to change Aurora Seco, which currently has roughly eleven hundred to twelve hundred vehicles a day, to result in an impact, a local street impact, you would need another two hundred ninety in order to go to the next level up on the tire index. We're projecting an additional eighty-three, okay, or two percent of the total trips, two percent of the total additional daily trips. So that we're still well under that threshold of what would be considered an impact. But again, we do have evidence of people saying, you know, we're concerned about what the volume is now on Aurora Seco being what it is. The threshold level on Campbell Avenue, which is a higher level street, there's already two thousand vehicles, you know, a day, and this is between Bascom and Midway, by the way, it's that section of East Campbell, just want to be clear, these are all Bascom to Midway. On Campbell Avenue, where you have two thousand vehicles a day, you would need five hundred additional vehicles to trigger what would be considered residential street impact on that particular street, because it's based on what the change is compared to what's there today.
So it's just a twenty-five percent increase roughly, is what you think it would be?
In, yes, in these particular instances, and that's, that's the way that the impact criteria is defined. But again, I would encourage you to say, if you look at the comments that are at the very back end of the packet, people who live on these streets are concerned about speed and volume, as most folks who live on any residential street would be. And so therefore, there's other measures that are available for consideration, although they do not actually are not tied to a projected impact, but it's more of a protective measure for when and if it becomes something that the city decides this is what we need to use to address this or to discourage more traffic from using the streets.
Well, but thank you for your answers. So if I'm looking at this, the daily project trips were eighty-three going out of Aurora Seco, another eighty-three out of Campbell Avenue, and those are the two entrances, right? Is that total?
Yeah, that would be on a daily basis, so that would be total project trips. And that's based on two percent of the total. That's what the projection is for using each of those particular streets. In the traffic analysis, we actually have a distribution table that says what percent is likely to use any particular street. And that includes these streets as well as Bascom and Hamilton and so on.
So that, and when it's a trip, is that in and out, or?
Yes, so you would, you would look at this as, if it's eighty-three, you might say that's roughly forty-two in and forty-one out, something like that, or vice versa, but it would be a fifty-fifty split for in and out.
That does suggest like a total number of cars in and out of a hundred and twenty a day. Is that right?
No, these are not, these are not the driveway counts, these are on, these are segment counts. And you would see the majority of trips entering and exiting this particular project will be coming off of Bascom Avenue. So this is indicative of what you would see on a Aurora Seco in that particular driveway. There'll be more exits on a Aurora Seco, because they're going to come out and make a, most of them are going to make a left and head back towards Bascom. Okay, but in terms of the number of project trips, the driveway that would be most heavily utilized is the one on Bascom.
What's that number?
Yeah, thank you.
That would be the difference between the total number of project trips and these, so if we looked at the trip generation table. And I'm going to look to that on my screen.
So what is the number? So we've got eighty-three, 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 and what is it for Bascom?
So the total number of net new daily trips, I'm just going to look it up, because I don't want to misquote it. Scrolling. Okay, we have a total, we have a total number of net new trips of four thousand one hundred and seventy-three that are being projected.
Okay, sorry, did you speak up? It's really hard to hear you.
Well, you need to really be quiet so we can.
Yeah, and I have my screen turned all the way up, so.
Folks, we need, you'll have your chance. We just need to listen to the consultant to get the information. Thank you.
And I'm gonna.
I just want to clarify, the Campbell Avenue you're talking about is the residential Campbell Avenue?
It is the residential Campbell Avenue side, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so what we have is on a daily basis approximately forty-one hundred trips per day. And that's based on us surveying other Chick-fil-A sites that are similar, meaning without drive-throughs. And thank you for calling that up, Daniel, or on the screen here. And what you see here, this is, this is how, this is the. And what you see here, this is, this is how, this is the distribution of what you would see from various streets and various locations. Eventually, most of these are going to arrive at the main entrance, what we call the main entrance, but the primary driveway on Bascom Avenue. So you might see, well, there's a lot of these that are coming, you know, from State Route seventeen or from Salmar or from Hamilton or whatever. Eventually, most of these are going to wind up on Bascom and entering the site from Bascom Avenue. Because that's the likely path of travel.
Can I ask about how you got to the two percent for each of those streets? What's what's the fourth? Did you? How do you accomplish getting that two percent? For each of those residential streets?
Yes, so when we look at traffic models and we look at the volumes that are on the street and how volumes are projected from any particular site, we are looking at where the residential areas are, what other land uses are, what are the traffic patterns in the area? And so it's basically what are the likely travel patterns? And this is from the county's traffic model and the area in and around Campbell, how much traffic is projected to use any particular street. So if you have a a restaurant or commercial use in this area, this would be the projected distribution or pattern of streets. And then from this, we say, okay, if this number is coming from east or west on Hamilton, how will they access the site? Well, they're going to come Hamilton, they're going to come down Bascom, they're going to go to that driveway. So that's how we route the trips. So this is projected based on census data, land use data, residential data and so forth from the county's model and what actually is experienced in this area of Campbell.
This is, this is, you know, I mean, I'm a little familiar with that, fairly familiar with that area. And and there's a lot of cut, my understanding, there's a fair amount of cuts through from Lee Avenue from the east that goes through that neighborhood. And so the question I have, is that factored in in your analysis?
I would say yes, because that's picked up on existing traffic counts. And it's picked up on what we're seeing in terms of the way the models are projecting traffic. Models are getting better at projecting, oh, what's the effect of ways or what's the effect of people finding alternate routes when certain routes are congested? So what a what a traffic model will look at is, hey, this is backed up on uh, Hamilton and I can't get there if I follow this route, so I'll take an alternate route. People will find a route. They'll they'll seek a route that they view or perceive as a faster route for themselves. That's the whole ways phenomena. So this is actually built into the analysis. The when you live on a residential street, as we all do, their perception is always going to be that there's a higher amount of cut through traffic than what might actually be measured quantitatively. It doesn't mean it's not real and that you're not feeling a concern about that because that that is real. But in terms of quantitative analysis, this is what we actually see and why we project it this way.
I have other questions not on this topic, so.
Uh, can we? Do you have something on this topic?
Trying to read this table and so is this counting one single trip for each, like on each segment separately? So if one person arrives via S R seventeen, turns on Hamilton and comes down Bascom, is that show one time in each of those three rows?
It will show up on each of those roads in the analysis. This table shows the trip, basically the origin of the trips. Eventually, they're all going to wind up at one of the two driveways in and out of the site. So the number of driveway trips is going to be much higher than any particular street segment.
You're saying that according to these trips will originate from somewhere in the north via California seventeen and the analysis doesn't break that down further to somewhere north of here.
Correct. It's somewhere north of Hamilton on Highway seventeen. And that's how they arrive. So they'll arrive seventeen at the Hamilton interchange and from there they get routed on Hamilton on South Bascom and to the driveway.
Okay, so when you say that trips from like via Oreo Seco, that's number of trips that start at Oreo Seco, not the number of trips that use Oreo Seco to go through?
These would be trips that originate from somewhere east on a Royal Seiko or somewhere further east, say Lee or something like that. If they get too much further than than Lee Avenue, I would think that they're you know, the the chance of them using a Royal Seiko versus another route diminishes significantly.
Okay, so okay, that that's what this table is describing. Thank you. That that explains it. Thank you.
I got a few questions here, Mark. Did you work on the the twenty nineteen traffic report?
Yes, our firm was responsible for for preparing that under the city's direction as well.
And I, you know, I don't know if I got an old, I got a hard copy of that report because I was actually on the planning commission way back then. But that report actually says for the original drive-through that the net increase of trips per weekday was two thousand two hundred and eighty-nine. And the current one, as you as you said, four thousand one hundred and seventy-three. Does that does that sound right?
I I I don't have the old, I don't have the old project open in front of me, but there is a difference in the total number of trips between these two proposed restaurants. There's two different, two, yeah, there's
Trips would this, would a would a sit-down restaurant result in more trips than the drive-through restaurant?
Uh, I I don't, like I said, I don't have the answer in front of me on what the old analysis proposed. But this restaurant is a different size and also without the drive-through has different characteristics. And which is why it doesn't lend itself to kind of standardize rates that come out of a book or a table. So that's why we went and surveyed similar sites to say, what is the trip potential for a Chick-fil-A specifically without a drive-through? And that's that's how we came upon these particular numbers. And I believe we also use these because they're more conservative, meaning higher than what the standard rates from a a trip generation manual would project. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, we were not underestimating trips.
I know things change. I and and really the reason I asked that, why this struck me, because I guess I was just assuming that the sit-down restaurant Chick-fil-A, that Chick-fil-A came back and gave us a sit-down restaurant instead of a drive-through. Uh, for some reason, I was assuming that the main reason they were doing that was to lower the traffic impact. And it looks like that's not the case, so I gotta kind of get my mindset in a different direction, I suppose.
I think if I were to espouse upon that briefly, it's not just the total number of trips that results in traffic impact. It's what happens? The difference between a drive-through operation versus one where you have people who are coming, parking, staying longer on site. And 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 so the drive-through operation is what's being removed here, and that's a that's a very big difference in terms of what will happen circulation wise.
Okay, no, that that's a good point. There's a lot to do, I know. Uh, here's one question for you, maybe, maybe for Daniel, just if I read it correctly, though. That there was a less than significant impact in terms of V M T all uses that are less than sixty thousand square feet. Is that is that the the standard now? Okay, so every any use less than sixty, at one point, one part is at fifty thousand and retail sixty thousand. Oh, okay.
And this was classified under the city's, uh, Ferrin Pierce, or Ferrin Pierce, who was the city's V M T consultant as a category.
Well, I have other questions, but not on the traffic, so I'll leave on that. Anybody else have something on this?
I have a question, yeah. So can you help me understand the Burbank and the Emeryville sites that don't have the drive-throughs? How similar or different are the characteristics of those sites versus this site?
Sure, um, they're they're actually, um, they're somewhat different from one another. If you see the Emeryville site is you know, you look at the sizes, um, the Emeryville site is smaller. The Burbank size, Burbank site
Site meeting the actual
Like, okay, so if you look at the, uh, what's on the screen right now, it'll list the address of the site. There's two surveys for each site, and then the second column from the left shows the size, the square footage. Of the building itself, and yes. And so you'll see the Burbank site at sixty-five hundred is is this a little bit bigger than what's being proposed in Campbell? The Emeryville site at forty-six hundred is is a smaller site, but that's why we look at it on a per square foot basis, not just, you know, every Chick-fil-A is the same regardless of whether it's four thousand, five thousand or six thousand. So on a per squid foot basis, we take a look at how many trips each of these and and we look at that, and in this table, what you also see is those sites were surveyed for their total number of trips that come in and out of their driveways. And what's also recognized and what's universal for any fast food, regardless of it's Chick-fil-A or anybody else, that a fair number of those trips are already on the roadway. They're going from point A to point B and they're going to stop by at Chick-fil-A or or fast food restaurant to eat or to, you know, pick something up. And there's a pass-by reduction of twenty-five percent built in. Now, V T A actually, I think, allows for a higher percentage. We lowered that here again to be more conservative. But that's that's very, it's like a gas station. It's the same kind of operation. Very few people will leave their house, go to a gas station and go right back home. Similarly with, uh, you know, this kind of restaurant. And so there's an accounting for the fact that some of these vehicles are already on you know, they're traveling between different points, whatever they might be doing uh, in the morning and the afternoon.
What about the zoning of those, like neighborhood, commercial?
I maybe Daniel can speak to the zoning. They are each situated on commercial streets, but they do not have similar residential characteristics nearby.
That would be outside of physical.
Yeah, I'm just quoting what I saw in the staff report, by the way.
Into account when analyzing the impact and traffic.
Well, the table here, and what Mark was discussing is kind of the starting point, of trying to figure out how much traffic this could be reasonably anticipated to generate. By looking at real world observation as opposed to just the textbook. For what it's worth, the table does actually, for comparison purposes at the bottom, actually show what a generic fast food restaurant would generate. And so the values here, what this study is taking into account based on the observed data is notably higher than a generic fast food restaurant. So to Mark's point, this is much more conservative methodology.
That's for this, but where where's the?
At at the bottom here. So these numbers here, the twenty-seven hundred, twenty-eight hundred, these are for reference. So these, these are looking at total daily trips. So this is much smaller than what this traffic report is anticipating for this proposal. So the numbers here are higher than just like the generic fast food restaurant.
I I have a couple of questions on this. Yeah, I actually caught the same thing. The 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 previous study that you did in two thousand nineteen looks very, very similar in terms of what you covered. And 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 the total trip number is almost is is not much more than half. And it was rejected at twenty-two eighty, it was twenty-two eighty-nine. So Commissioner Craig was correct in that. So I it 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 puzzles me that we have this much higher trip rate than the drive-through version, and I I'm not sure I'm I'm buying your explanation about that and and the forty-one hundred number seems hot. I I mean, the pass-by thing is is you know, I I I don't, I I guess there's higher experts on this than certainly than me, but but the pass-by of twenty-five percent strikes me odd, too. It's like somebody driving by by on Bascom at a quarter, a quarter of the people are going to stop at Chick-fil-A that they wouldn't have normally done. I I doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me, but so my my question is, again, you know, i- if in in fact, the the studies were fairly similar, although you didn't make a comparison with other Chick-fil-A's, which we've only have two of them to compare in the state that aren't drive-in. How you, how would you rationalize the the fact that it's almost twice as much as the the drive-in study? I I just don't get it.
If I could quickly jump in, so if the Denny's was in operation at the time the traffic study was conducted, you're looking at the delta between the existing trips and the new trips. So we would have deducted the existing Denny's trips. And not the, not literally the Denny's trips, but the generic restaurant that would have been there. So you would actually have a over-under. Here, the building's vacant, so everything is on paper new. And plus also recall too, that that building was smaller than this one. So you actually have two data points that are going to result in a different outcome.
Yeah, and I I I have a problem with the square footage thing, too, because I get it. If you reduce square footage on a sit-down service restaurant, then you're going to get less customers because there's only so many tables. If you if you cut it by twenty-five percent, you have twenty percent, twenty percent less seating, but this is not a a sit-down restaurant. This is a a fast service restaurant in which a significant number of people are going to be picking up and leaving, uh, ordering, picking up and leaving. And that was my next question is, did you factor in the fact that the order online and pickup is has has gone through the roof since the end of the pandemic? I've read numbers where, and and I don't know if you know the number for Chick-fil-A or if they've offered it, but it 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 can be forty or fifty or even more percentage of of their business would be order, go there, park temporarily, pick it up and leave rather than sitting there and taking it. So to me, there's a delta of some sort in terms of the 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 issues with regard to traffic and congestion and parking issues that are associated with online and pickup and DoorDash and Uber and all the rest. And I'm wondering if you factor that in to your analysis?
Yeah, I'll I'll speak to that because it's it's an excellent point, and it is also a key difference in from the prior study, which was before COVID, when there certainly was uh, online delivery and things, but not to the extent that we saw it pick up during COVID. Right? So these surveys are very recent. The Emeryville site, although it's only forty-six hundred and ten square feet, is doing a business of almost forty-two hundred trips per day. That includes DoorDash, Uber Eats, people running in and out and just, you know, getting something to go. Not everyone sits down and spends twenty minutes or forty minutes eating in a restaurant. That's, it's all built in, the different activities of the way a Chick-fil-A without a drive-through functions today in twenty twenty-four is what this represents in terms of total trips. Now, that may explain the difference in numbers between this and and what, say, a standard, you know, fast food restaurant without drive-through may generate. But we wanted to make sure that we're replicating whatever Chick-fil-A's business is for a non-drive-through restaurant. And that's that's what we're seeing in this particular table. And that includes all the different activities and all the different ins and outs that happen and all the functionality.
Okay, and and I got to follow up to that about the location. So and and how how this might be something, I don't know whether this is part of your study in terms of, but you know, the Emeryville location is part of a big, big box, commercial district. Okay, so it's part of a of an oversized commercial area that 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 it's within, and there's no neighborhood nearby. It's totally commercial. And it it seems to me that it has a different dynamic, potentially the Emeryville one than say the one that we're looking at here. Uh, is that something that is taken into consideration?
The location specific is not something that's factored in. We were trying to survey, and again, there were only two operational Chick-fil-A's without drive-throughs at the time we were able to gather this information. It's a relatively new thing. There have been some that have been approved recently. Uh, I can't speak to whether they're operational yet or not, but there's there's obviously very few of this model that we were able to get uh, data for and to prepare this analysis. So what we're looking at So what we're looking at is the functionality of the building. The location may have something to do with how much traffic's being, you know, going in and out of a particular site. But for us, this was more important to say, what is a Chick-fil-A without a drive-through? What is its trip potential?
And, 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 and one more thing about, about the, somebody else brought it up about the denial in two thousand twenty from the council. Um, would, do we know? I'm, I'm in the impression that it had to do with the, the, the traffic study got Fs for certain intersections, and that was the rationale for denying it. Uh, uh, do we know? I know you're saying you, you weren't involved in it, but does, do we know anything about uh the rationale for the, for the council denying uh the drive-through at that time?
I mean, I'd have to look at the record more closely, but bear in mind, that was a very different legislative context. Different general plan, substantially different zoning code and different thresholds of significance under CEQA. So it was in a very real way, almost like, it's not quite an appropriate comparison anymore. We have different policies in place that we need to look at today, not those that were applied in the past.
I guess what you're saying, what you said before is that it's, the area's been downzoned.
Correct.
And that now we're estimating more trips than before for a downzoned area.
Correct, and that's, and that's, yeah, and that's certainly part of your conversation of the appropriateness of this level of traffic generation for this property and the zoning district.
Oh, and, and, and we don't have, it could, you know, it's, it's gone to neighborhood commercial. And so technically, a, a business of this size is a storefront with, with normal um, you know, usage pits for, for that. It's a small building, it's, it's a, it's a small retail storefront. However, is there any, in, in terms of how we've redefined uh, uh, the neighborhood commercial area, is there anything in that that says that can be overridden because of the intensity level of that particular store might be much higher than, than would be normally expected? So if, if, i- i- if, if it was a um, any other number of retail places or a, a fast food place that just, you know, has half of, half as many trips, uh, is, is there um something in the way that we've defined neighborhood commercial that can, the extra intensity of? Because, because Chick-fil-A does have extra intensity. It's the number one revenue generating fast food company in the, per store in the country. It's, it's the number one by far. So, so it, it is a special case in that respect. So I'm wondering if, if that's taken into consideration when we think about what goes into a neighborhood commercial retail place?
Oh, I mean, I would say certainly. I mean, that's part of kind of your conversation here. I mean, you have a lot of general plan policies that are guiding the decision. I mean, the city, we have policies and actions coming out of the general plan, and they are supposed to guide rational decision-making. And a lot of these types of decisions are a lane of priorities, of impacts, again, benefits. And it's really the nature of what land use planning is. A lot of these types of requests don't have very obvious outcomes that can be proactively prescribed at the outset. I mean, this is why fast casual uses are conditional use. They do allow for case-by-case consideration by the city's decision-making bodies.
Yep, yeah, for talking about the uh, the zoning right now, I think we moved to that subject. I said, yeah, we're just, in your report that you just gave right now, you talked about that we changed uh this from general commercial to neighbor commercial. Is that in our report?
It is.
It is, okay. Uh, so I guess, and I know all the neighbors are gonna be speaking here in a minute. And, you know, just one of the things is, you know, we wanna make sure we didn't pull a fast one, you know, on the neighbors in terms of that use. And that's what Commissioner Zister was asking about just now, too. And I, you know, it took me a while on our site to pick up neighborhood commercial zoning district. And I picked that up in just the one pertinent sentence in there, uh, blah, blah, blah. Grocery stores, laundries, personal services, pharmacies and restaurants are prime examples of neighborhood commercial uses. So uh, changing from general commercial to neighbor commercial, as you said it just now when you, when you gave your report, is kind of a downzoning, so we're trying to soften. Soften the use there, so I get, so I guess I'm just wondering if uh, and I hadn't realized until you mentioned it, that we downzoned from general neighborhood commercial, which is even a softening. So I was even wondering if in the past, you know, we were already being honest with the neighbors in that district. Obviously, you know, they're living in a house, they're living off of Bascom Avenue, and it's a big commercial street. Uh, but have we changed the type of uses that can go there? Have we really changed it? And we have changed, we've actually softened it, so it should be less, less of an impact on the neighbors. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I mean, there are differences in the allowable land uses between general commercial neighborhood. As I, as I mentioned before, a uh drive-through restaurant is simply not allowable. So, but you also can't do a nightclub. You can't do a auto repair shop. The buildings have to be lower, the setbacks are greater.
Do we allow drive-throughs anywhere?
We do.
In general commercial?
General commercial.
Okay, it is allowed in general commercial?
It's still conditional use, but yes.
And the, well, when we say in our, in our zoning code, neighbor commercial, we say restaurants. We often say grocery stores, pharmacies. But when we say restaurants, we don't delineate between a high-volume restaurant and a, and a sit-down.
Well, so, then, then the narrative, the narrative text of the zoning code and general plan, I mean, to provide the overall context, the intent and the goal of the zoning district. But at a, at a practical level, that's actually put into action by the land use tables. The land use tables is what you saw last year, the streamlining ordinance. They actually itemize all the different types of land. And so as I was mentioning earlier, you do have now a distinction, a very binary distinction between quick service and full-service restaurants. That really, right now, is the entirety of restaurants.
Yeah.
Um, in the future, I suppose the city council could look at further subdividing those restaurants to try to better capture intensity. Uh, but right now, technically on paper, a quick-service restaurant does very much encapsulate a very wide variety of operations.
And I guess that's what Mark mentioned in his, in his traffic study, too. But I guess my final question for you on this subject would be, has the city of Campbell allowed uh all kinds of restaurants in neighborhood commercial? Has there been any kind of restaurant that they have other than, I guess, drive-through now? Has there been any type of restaurants that they said, no, it's not right for neighborhood?
Not that I recall.
That's what you're gonna tell me. Thank you. I got another question about parking. So I understand that, you know, technically, the parking number, whatever it's fifty-seven, I guess, fifty-eight, is, is, is above the, the requirement. Um, but my issue would be about the question of whether it's, it's um a sufficient capacity and whether or not we can consider that issue because, because um, uh, oh, I'm sorry, the, the, the parking lot is sixty-two. And the, the, the study showed fifty-seven as the maximum peak hours, right? But we have employees. The employees range from seven onsite to fifteen at peak hours. Some of those employees are gonna have cars. Uh, uh, of the fifteen in peak hours, I, I don't know, half of them. So it, it, when you take the employee uh parking capacity, uh, plus the fact that there's eleven EV uh spots that they or may not be used by other, may not be used. Um, uh, which I find is interesting that there's like eleven EV spots. I, I think, I guess for the future, that's good. But um, uh, so it looks to me like there's a potential for, for the parking lot to get filled at peak hours. Uh, when you add the po- potential for employee cars as well as the capacity number that the, that showed. And so the overflow and, and, and the unknown about uh pickup by DoorDash um says to mean potentially during peak hours that the parking lot is gonna get filled and there's gonna be people uh strolling through the parking lot to find spaces and going in and out on the, on the neighborhood streets, parking on the neighborhood streets, okay? Uh, along uh, what's this? Yeah, so, so from, from a practical point of view, I, I, again, it, it goes back to the question of whether or not th- this is something that we can look at and, and concern ourselves with from a, from a acceptance or rejection point.
I think you have a question.
And I'm the guy who likes parking.
I just wanna point out, like, as noted in the staff report, not only is this an AB twenty-nine-seven area, which means, no, we can't require parking here, but even if this wasn't in an AB twenty-nine-seven area, the parking standards that we, the city have adopted, we require fifty parking spaces. They're requiring uh sixty, sixty-eight, I think it was, sixty-four.
Yeah.
And I would also just add that.
But that doesn't, that doesn't, that does, that ignores the fact of whether or not it could be overfull parking. The, the reality.
If we care about that, then if that, that's a real issue, then we can't deal with that by saying you should have more parking. You already have more parking than we would require.
I'm not asking for more parking.
The ways to deal with that are things like, like, I have like various feelings about, you know, how would you manage parking in the city? But like, it's not their responsibility to manage the street parking around.
I have an idea. How about, since this is the question period?
Yeah.
For staff, we finish that and then we're gonna go right up to the podcast.
Yes, we are soon. As soon as we uh find out, any of the commissioners have any more questions?
No.
No, no, no? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Majeski, do you have any questions?
I have one question for staff.
I apologize.
That's all right. Can you hear me well? Can you hear me? Okay, great.
You sound like you're at the bottom of a well.
I'm, my mouth is on my mic, but that's okay. I'll just listen to you guys.
So do you have any more, any questions?
Uh, regarding the queuing situation, it sounds like there's not a really good solution other than either removing four street trees or kind of waiting to see if we're gonna have a backup of people queuing. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, I mean, the uh, as the staff report does discuss, the idea is that removing the four trees is uh creates conflicts with the general plan that talks about preserving street trees and median landscaping. Really, it's, and they're trying to minimize how much the city's, you know, public areas devoted to cars. Uh, particularly since, to some degree, any traffic study is based on a lot of assumptions. So we don't necessarily know what degree there would be an impact and if that impact could actually be addressed through just tweaking of the signal timings in a manner that could actually preserve those trees. But if in the event that traffic, that turning queue does become problematic to the operations of Bascom Avenue, the city could require a deferred street improvement agreement that could compel the property owner and/or applicant in the future to actually do the extension work if ultimately that's decided to be necessary by the city.
Okay, thank you.
I had one, one question, just, I, I wanna make sure I understand what's going on here. So um, we want the patio facing Bascom Avenue because Bascom Avenue is one of our immediate streets who we want to be inviting. At the same time, Bascom Avenue is one of our arterial streets, and so there's a high volume of traffic going really fast on that.
But there's also a fifteen-foot landscape. Well, you actually have a ten-foot public park strip, a seven-foot public sidewalk and fifteen-foot landscaping strip. So you have a significant amount of buffer from the roadway to the building.
Okay, that's, that makes sense. That's all I want.
I'm gonna ask one quick question. Uh, and just, Leslie, I was just gonna ask you a quick question. And I, because one of our letter writers did a math thing on this. Has the city estimated the type of, the amount of sales tax revenue that this restaurant could generate? Any ballpark?
Only from figures that were given in national retail trends. Uh, we don't, we are not typically just, no retailer wants uh specific sales volumes made public, but we know roughly what uh Chick-fil-A's do nationally. They can be the, there's a range. They can be the number one sales tax generator in some communities. And yet, in other communities, and especially without the drive-through, the volume is less. So um, you know, typically, I think, I think the figure I got today, I'm trying to remember, um, they do about nine million dollars a year in sales on an average. And I may be wrong, but that's one figure I got today. But you, you really can't apply that uniformly.
The city's share is what, at ten percent or?
Um, well, it would be one, one percent of the, whatever it's. We, most, every city gets about one percent as a base of the total sales tax applied.
Right.
So in Campbell, right now.
Plus the city's added.
We're, no, the city, we, the, every city gets one percent. Let's say the sales tax is nine point five percent.
City gets one percent of that.
Plus any, uh, any percentage that is an extra tax, like a, that is passed, okay? And many cities are doing that, but the base is one percent. The majority goes to the state, a small percentage goes to the county, and the cities get one percent. But as I mentioned, you know, in a town the size of Campbell and in all small towns that don't have a large number of large format retail, ops retail, if you wanna call it, um, it's the small businesses that generate that range that are critically important. And that's what Campbell, there, if you will, the portfolio is made up of a lot of small, medium-sized businesses that generate less than a hundred thousand dollars a year in sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, question for staff. Um, so uh, Bascom. So Bascom being a, um, being a arterial street, uh, it by itself could probably easily support these numbers that we're seeing. But I also hear that we wanna have road diet going on and we wanna narrow Bascom down and have those plans being taken into account in our reports.
The thing you're alluding, you're alluding to the uh VTA complete street study. So that's a, uh, we have a traffic engineer here, Matthew, would you speak to that more? But as a VTA document, city still actually needs to take action to implement that, fund it. And as noted in the staff report, really, priority right now is further north in San Jose. Would be quite some time before any of that's ever looked at at this portion of Bascom. But yes, I mean, I think you're sensing that the long-term trend in the state policy level is to de-emphasize personal vehicle traffic at large.
Yeah, I just, just uh, the, the VTA complete street thing ends at, at Hamilton. It does not extend into Camp, uh, south into Campbell at this point. So there, there's only a plan for uh, north of San Carlos, which we're in, where it starts at eight-eighty, and Bascom coming down to Hamilton, and that's the end of it. So unless the city does something in terms of their own planning of a Bascom as part of that, then there, there's nothing, there's nothing presently uh happening unless, unless the Bascom plan. I know there's some kind of Bascom plan, but I, I don't think it's in, 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 so, so it ends at Hamilton.
Do you have any more questions?
I'm, I'm ready for the, here from the app pen, I think.
Good evening, Chairs, Mr. and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Christine Cho. I'm the principal development lead for Chick-fil-A for Northern California. Um, thank you for your time and consideration this evening. I'd like to especially thank Planning Department and city staff and Mr. Freeman for our, for our presentation of our project tonight. Um, we're excited to be back here in the city of Campbell and to propose one of our first few freestanding restaurants without a drive-through in the Bay Area. Um, this site has been specifically designed with adjacent neighborhood in mind. We are working with the staff to ensure optimal pedestrian access. We have a large inviting dining room, bicycle parking, outdoor patio and a children's playground. One of my favorite things about Chick-fil-A that sets us apart from other quick-service restaurants is a length that goes to give back to a surrounding neighborhood and the communities. And we are well-known for participating. And we are well known for participating in local schools, nonprofit and community events. And I would also expect that this restaurant would employ many students from nearby schools. We're known for hiring kids for their first jobs. This particular restaurant will generate approximately a hundred new jobs. And these are great jobs, offer good pay, great benefits, flexible hours and opportunities for leadership growth. So we are committed to being a great neighbor. The community is our top priority and we're grateful for this opportunity this evening and look forward to serving this wonderful Campbell community. We have brought our project team here tonight and happy to answer any questions that you might have about Chick-fil-A. And at this time, I'd like to introduce you to our development consultant.
Thanks, Christine. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Hudson Brooks. I'm with four G Development and we're the development consultants for Chick-fil-A in the West. I'd like to thank Daniel first for, the staff report is very thorough. We appreciate everything he did there. We appreciate having this opportunity before the actual planning commission to talk it through with you guys and receive your comments. We haven't yet, so we received comments from planning staff and we haven't yet addressed those and gone back in because we were waiting to do this tonight and get those comments before we go back. One thing I do want to note, and I believe this was shared with you all, is our architect M C G put together a site plan and elevations that address a lot of the initial comments from city staff. And so a part of tonight, we would love to hear if you believe that's going in the right direction so that we can move forward with that. Yeah. And as Christine said, we have our design team here tonight to, to take comments and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fields. So there's no Chick-fil-A's between Cupertino and Blossom Hill today. I'm curious, like, went to do this in Campbell, went through the process, got rejected. Why back at the exact same site as opposed to like anywhere else in this region? Like what, what's made this particular location so attractive?
Well, we, we are looking to be, like we said, we're more of a, you know, neighborhood focused company brand. And, you know, we wanted to be here the first time and I don't think just because we got denied, I don't think that ever changed our thought process about not wanting to be here any longer. So we, that's why we came forward again the second time with a new concept. We feel fits the neighborhood and to comply with the, I mean, general plan.
Can you maybe, we know parking is off the menu, but like maybe comment specifically on the rationale of why it was rejected last time? Why we would accept it this time, like as it relates to maybe primarily traffic concerns or stuff you've heard from the neighbors?
Well, this time we do not have a drive-through. And I know that the drive-through is always a big concern. And we want this to be more of a inviting neighborhood restaurant and it is a different concept. And like Leslie mentioned, the non-drive-through is a little bit lower volume. So that's why we felt that this time around it was the right fit and it was the right time to come back.
Okay. And do your sort of per store visit numbers line up with what we saw today in terms of like total volume? Did that look about right to you in terms of how many cars?
Well, I mean, the Emeryville and Burbank locations are very different locations. And like I said, this is one of our first few in the Bay Area when we have Emeryville, that's a non-drive-through. The other location that we just got approved is in Walnut Creek, which is very similar to this project. It's kind of neighborhood commercial zone. And so frankly, we just don't have enough data because it is such a new concept. And the two other locations are very different than this location. So I can't really comment on that other than we just don't have the data for this type of area in a non-drive-through in a residential commercial.
My last question, any, any comment just sort of on the traffic remediations? You mentioned you've done some stuff for the design per city feedback. What about, like where, where are you all at in terms of traffic?
That, that would be, I would need to defer that to the traffic engineer, but what exactly?
I guess, I mean, are, are you supportive of some of the things that were, that were sort of called out as recommendations? Some of which Chick-fil-A would need to pay for?
Yeah. So Chick-fil-A is definitely willing to work with the community here with what you all would recommend. So based on the traffic study, based on what you all think reasonable, we would be open to any recommendations to implement into this next set.
And my last question, we always ask about this, lots of, it says E V capable. Does that mean they're definitely E V or were these like, why such a high volume of those?
Yeah. So the city of Campbell doesn't have any specific restrictions on E V stalls. So these are state requirements here. And there's going to be three E V charging stations that are lined up to actually have E V charging available. But then the E V capable, there's going to be ten and those are not yet E V stalls. So there's conduit running to them to be potentially an E V stall.
In the future, but not probably at.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Makes sense. Uh, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay. So the, that Emeryville site, that's not a drive-through site? Why was that not a drive-through site given how the location?
Wasn't.
Oh, it was a Panera conversion and it was not allowed to have a drive-through.
Oh, is it based on the existing permit?
It was a tenant improvement project. Yeah. So we can't disclose like exact percentages because, you know, this site has not been built yet. We don't know that. But I do know that this site, Chick-fil-A, as Christine has said, is proposing this to be a very neighborhood centered store. So, you know, there's a bigger dining room because of that. We want to bring in guests and have this be a place that they can come in, gather. Also, there's a playground proposed, so it even mostly supports that.
And let me just ask again, I was just asked, but I, so in terms of Emeryville and Burbank and now Walnut Creek, those are going to be not or are not drive-throughs? Because either A, they drive-through weren't allowed, but was there also an attempt to lower the volume? Impact on the community? Was that the, part of the idea?
No, the Walnut Creek project that recently got approved, the general plan in that it was in a, within a shopping center did not allow.
Did not allow it. Those are the reasons. Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to ask them a question after I hear the public testimony.
Okay.
All right.
I just, I'm going to take this. Oh, sorry. Thank you. The Walnut Creek thing is, as you've mentioned just now, is, you know, is a shopping center. There's a knob hill and it's, it's like a rectangular shopping center with parking in the middle, right? So it's going to be one of the stores in the parking center. Is that correct?
It's an out parcel. We're actually demolishing an existing, a former Bank of America building, bacon.
Is, is, it's on the edge of the parking?
Yes.
But, but it, it's not really the same as Bascom. Bascom is, is not, there's not a shopping center standalone. So there, there is a difference and that, the, it, it's, it's on a neighborhood street. So I, I would, I would think that you would differentiate the Walnut Creek one from this one in terms of its location and you know, it, it, since it isn't within the shopping center. And, and as I mentioned before, the, the Emeryville one is, is in a big box shopping center, right? So, so those are both very different, it seems to me. Would you agree?
Sure. In that sense, yes. It is off of a, one of the streets is a street that leads into a residential.
Right. Behind the shopping center, there's a residential. Okay. I, I just have a question about, I, I know this can be proprietary information, but, but I, I, I asked before about the, the whole order online and pickup segment that, like I said, I read an article, a couple of articles about the fact that it can be forty, fifty, sixty percent of business. Do you guys, I mean, if it's proprietary and you don't want to let us know, I, I understand that. But, but do you have a sense for what a, a restaurant like this would have in terms of the percentage of customers actually just coming in to pick up something and leave?
No, we don't have that percentage, especially because this is like, it's one of the first few non-drive-throughs in this type of zone. We just, I just don't have that data.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have any questions? The applicant? We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so I'm, I'll, we'll go to, we go to the public. Two minutes for each person and you want to start by, starting off your list? Okay.
Wayne Firsty.
So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. So I'm Wayne Firsty. I'm a Campbell resident for twenty-five years. And I live in the, the Prune Yard residential area that everybody's talking about. I want to start off with something really, really simple. And you talk about trying to remove four trees. You guys will laugh at this, but you guys put numbers on every tree along the street. Why? So that we can't take them away easily. And here we are, literally they number the trees. There's a little tag. And here we are saying, gee, let's let somebody just take four trees away. We can't even take them away from ourselves. So I want to get that out of the way, but just so that you understand. So I want to talk about the traffic for a minute. One of the things was talking about four thousand trips. And how it's only two percent. But it's not four thousand trips over twenty-four hours. So when somebody says there's eighty trips more or a hundred trips more, it's not at two in the morning, at four in the morning and I'm going to take all eighty and divide them out. It's all at lunchtime or all at dinner. So when we say it's two percent, is it really two percent of the number of cars that go through between six and seven at night? Or is it two percent if I spread it out over twenty-four hours? Because those are the things that, this is like deja vu. Because this is exactly what we did three, three, four years ago, except now the volume has doubled. So are we looking at two percent over how the traffic is today? How about two percent over what it was or twenty-five percent threshold of what it was two years ago? When that was already a challenge. The wonderful folks here who said this is a different concept. Because it's a sit-down. Are the prices any different? Is the selection of food any different? Are the french fries coming in a, in a fancy plate? What's different of this new concept? So is it drive-through or is it really drive, park, grab and go? So instead of. Grab up your finals. Okay. The last thing is, here we're talking about the traffic on Bascom Avenue. From what I understand, there's a two hundred and five unit apartment building and a hundred and fifty room hotel basically catty corner away from this unit. So when we think about parking or driving or anything else, look at the bigger picture that says, I got another two hundred units of living and a hundred and fifty hotels coming in, literally catty corner across the street. So I just want to put all that in context so that people understand it's just more than just one, one item. The fact that we're in front of this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vicki Essert, and I believe Vicki has a presentation as well.
I have a screen I would like to share. So when we Googled, we found actually three locations in the Bay Area that, that supposedly are non-drive-through. One, one is the Emeryville, one is in Pleasanton and one is in San Mateo. And as soon as he's able to get that up, we'll, we'll put it up. But you will see that none of them are even close to any homes. And this property is literally in people's backyards. The back third, the eastern back third is bordered by homes. You know, that it's, it's the back, okay, here. It's not fairing. Okay. Well, maybe I can just turn it so the council can see. Or the commission. Oh, there it is. Okay. All right. Okay, there's the Emeryville. On a huge, huge. This is a San Mateo. And this one is a Pleasanton. Now, you, um, Pleasanton does have some residential on the other side, but it's oriented in the opposite direction. Most of the streets don't go through and it's separated by a six lane divided road. So here's our Campbell site. And then the closer view. So, you know, as I said, it's, this is a literally in people's backyards. And last time we did a whole study using several different mapping apps, how the cars get routed through the neighborhood. And they're all still valid. You know, I just checked quite a few of them and they're still being routed through the neighborhood. If you come from east of Lee, you're going to be routed, routed through our neighborhood. And the Bascom Avenue Complete Streets does go all the way down south, almost to eighty-five. So, I mean, I, the section in downtown Campbell is going to remain three lanes in each. But the throughway is, does extend all the way through. So I'll stop because my time's up, but thank you.
Sabrina Jansen.
Hi there. My name is Sabrina Jansen. I've lived on Shady Dell Avenue for twenty-one years. I raised my son there. I walk my dog down Midway to Futral, back down Bascom to Shady Dell every morning. And I will tell you all of the stop signs on each one of those corners along Midway and along Bascom. No one stops at those stop signs or maybe fifty percent of the people stop. My dog's been almost hit twice. I'm very, very opposed to this because of safety. I would feel we will have a pedestrian death if we have all these people will be driving through those streets. And I think I did a quick Google search and you can order through DoorDash, Uber Eats, Postmates. And all those people will be in a rush to pick those foods up and get them out to people. So I'm absolutely drastically opposed because I believe we're going to have real issues in our neighborhood. So please keep it safe for all of the kids who live there and don't let this come to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Joe Hernandez.
Good evening. I'm Joe Hernandez. I've been resident for Campbell for twenty-seven odd years. I was on the planning commission as well for a number of years and then on the city council for a while after that. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. Study sessions are great because it gives you a chance to get a window into what the applicant is trying to do. I think there's a number of issues that are very real issues that I think there's time to figure out a solution for them. But this whole left-hand queuing issue and the neighborhood traffic, those are two issues. And so real, the purpose of planning is to find a solution to those issues. I would strongly, strongly suggest that you don't kick the can down the road. I know there's some things you can do to try to mitigate those things in the future if there's a problem. My experience is those don't work. I've always regretted saying, why didn't we go and solve that now versus kick the can down the road? So I strongly, strongly encourage you, this is the right time to do this, to work with the applicant, to find a solution for those things. If you can't, it may not be a use that fits in that spot, which is unfortunate. But it's not the city's issue. I understand the economic development issue there, but the former tenant that used to be in that site just reopened two blocks away. And so what happened landlord? What happened to that site? What happened to that site? If there's an economic development issue, that might have been your issue, not the city's issue. So again, take the time, figure out a solution for this. You got the time to do that. If you got an applicant that's really willing to make this work, they'll do it. But if they don't, don't try and fit a square peg in a round hole. Thanks.
Maria Smith.
Good evening. I'm a Shady Dell resident. I've lived there since 1996, and I firmly believe that this is a quality-of-life issue. I'm really disappointed that me and my neighbors have to be here again. We're not happy with this proposal. Why is it a quality-of-life issue? We don't want to lose our street trees. They're a great buffer. They're one of the, they're one of the things that make the street what it is and make it less arterial. The increase in traffic is going to affect all the families that come from the county side of Campbell and Arroyo Seco, across Lee, to access downtown Campbell, to access Los Gatos Creek Trail. Go around our neighborhood and look at all the pedestrians, the dog walkers, the cyclists, the strollers, three-point turns with all the other transportation alternatives that are post-COVID are of our neighborhood. Not safe. The other piece is that I don't trust that when you guys go on to do your next thing, that somebody will hold this applicant accountable to pay for traffic mitigation. There may not be the economy to support it. They will say that never happened. There will be nobody to back it up. Like Joe says, fix that. Fix it and see what's going to fit. And thank you for your time tonight.
Catherine Block.
My name is Catherine Block, and I live on Arroyo Seco. I was part of the group that led the appeal with the Planning Commission's approval of the CFA back in 2019, 2020. There were a plethora of problems with the CFA at this location, and many of those, most of those issues that were discussed by the City Council when denying the application in 2020 are still a concern today and have become even more intense with the changing environment, with the recent developments along Bascom. Additionally, there has been a change in zoning, as I understand, for this property to low-impact neighborhood retail. And I'm just wondering, how can anyone think that this project falls within those parameters? And we're looking at now, what I just heard, doubling the amount of trips to the CFA for the Chick-fil-A from the previously proposed drive-through. And, you know, furthermore, unlike the other Chick-fil-A locations being discussed tonight, this location, as somebody else mentioned, is surrounded by residential neighborhood. Those other locations are all surrounded by commercial properties. And this was a real concern for the City Council back in 2020, when they turned it down. Even more astonishing for me are the numbers I heard, which indicates that over 4,000 trips to the site, doubling the numbers, and then indicating that of those, only 80 cars would end up on Arroyo Seco. I just, I can't wrap my head around it. I live on Arroyo Seco, where it meets Lee, and I can tell you, it's a complete cut-through. There's a wishbone there that was put in to stop the traffic from coming and going. It doesn't work. All day long, I sit on my porch, and I watch the cars turn left, where they're only supposed to turn right, and it goes on all day long. So you can mitigate the Arroyo Seco disaster that this will create, or attempt to, but it isn't going to work. And so I really hope that, you know, you look at what went on last time, that the amount of outpouring from the community, and, you know, represent all of us from the, from Campbell, and they were from Los Gatos and San Jose, who showed up here, by the hundreds, to say, we don't want it. We didn't want it then, we don't want it now, with or without the drive-through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more speaker cards, and I don't see anybody on the floor raising their hands. Is there anybody in the chamber? Anybody else who would like to speak? You can come up. Just come up and state your name and your address if you'd like.
My name is Patrick Murphy. I've been a resident of Campbell since 1960. I live at 1084 Arroyo Seco, which was on the board there. I live two houses from the Denny's, the old Denny's parking lot. Two minutes is not enough to cover everything that was addressed. So I'm hoping there'll be another opportunity for us to spend a little bit more time on this. But I'm just going to leave with this one thought. The gentleman over here, I want to thank him for his candor when he made the comment that it's not these folks' responsibility to manage traffic. We have trouble managing parking on our street as it is, with these small businesses that are there. People parking on our street, going to the massage parlor, the sandwich shop, which, people are going to do that. It's, it's public street. But 81 cars a day? I don't think so. This is, this is absurd. I really question the data that the gentleman put out there, and I think we need more time to take a look at this and to study this. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you've lived there since 1969?
Not in that house. I've lived in Campbell since 1960.
How long?
Only ten, so.
How long in that house, if I may?
I'm sorry?
How long have you lived in that?
About 31 years now.
Okay. So my question is, what solutions would you suggest to fix the traffic?
Well, yeah. You know, we can come up with solutions to fix the traffic, but as Catherine stated, people ignore the rules. We see it every day. And no fault of the people that own the smoke shop, not their fault. They're the owner. But their clientele, the increase of traffic and speeding on our street has been exponential since they went in. It's just the type of traffic that they're playing.
So the reason I ask the question is that, thank you. The reason I ask the question is that there are measures that can be taken, for example, speed bumps, for example, you know, so that it makes the local, excuse me, if I may finish, so that it would make the local residents more uncomfortable, because they're using it all the time. But it does discourage speeding, and it does discourage, you know, unless you want to hurt your car, you know?
Well, I'm not, I'm not aware of anybody on my street that is opposed to speed bumps, but I don't think that's going to solve the problem. I think, as was pointed out, the other Chick-fil-A locations, I'm surprised they don't have more data about how many people frequent these. I'm very, very surprised at that. I think that that should be something that should be looked into. But those, those other locations, as was pointed out, are not in an area that is immediately residential. It's going to affect the other businesses in a negative way.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Diane Applegate. I live on El Solio. I've been there for 35 years. And my question is regarding the traffic study, because my husband and I, Waze, everybody uses Waze, and we went to a few locations to Waze, how it would tell us to get to this location. And what it mentioned was about on Hamilton Avenue, and that was the starting point. We went down, I'm sorry, on Bascom Avenue. We came off Hamilton, turned on Bascom, and you would think it would tell you to go to that U-turn and come back into Denny's. It didn't. It told us to go left on Campbell Avenue, right on Peter, right on El Solio, and then come in on the backside. So that traffic study may show, it starts on Bascom, but it will end up in the neighborhood. So just wanted to say that.
Hi, Joel Hernandez. I live on North Peter Drive. I've lived there for 28 years. And we have an excessive amount of, of cars that come through from Lee Avenue, cut through, because we have a lot of straight streets that come through from Lee to Bascom. People don't want to bother with dealing with the lights at Hamilton. So they cut through, and that's not illegal. Cutting through a neighborhood is not illegal. But trying to do it at 40, 45 miles an hour, passing people, they've, people have passed us. While I'm trying to drive 20, 25 in my neighborhood, someone has passed me on the left side, doing 40. Yes. So, and we have speed bumps on Campbell Avenue, between Lee and Bascom, and they've done nothing. People don't slow down. They go right over them. They just go right over them. They do, it does nothing. And they put a pork chop out there to try to limit the number of accidents from Campbell out onto Lee. People literally just make a left right out of it. It doesn't, people don't pay attention. They don't care. So, and I see them coming straight from Lee into that, into patio, because I lived right off of patio, and they cut through. And, and they literally passed me on the left-hand side. It's crazy. Those are the kinds of things we're dealing with now. So that's exactly what we're talking about. So to increase that by another 80, 100, 200, I don't, you know. Yeah. So just wanted to explain that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Peggy Bryan. I've lived on Arroyo Seco for 40, 43 years. So I've seen, I've seen the changes. I've raised my kids there. Two things quickly. One, I'll go along with the, the speed, the cut-through, and there's no enforcement. And also, on Arroyo Seco, we did look at getting speed bumps. We submitted a petition, and it was rejected because it was said Arroyo Seco didn't qualify for speed bumps. So maybe that's changed. The other thing, which I know you have nothing to do about, but I got to get it off my chest, neighborhood, community, not mine, not mine. I've been married to my wife for, since it was legal, and I know the politics can't be considered, but in my backyard, that's a tough one to swallow. Thank you.
Hey, can I ask you a question? Sure. Hey, Peggy.
Can I ask you a quick question? Yeah. You had 43 years in the street. Could you come up to the microphone real quick?
Just wanted to ask, you was a longtime resident, so, so when Denny's was in there, and I know Arroyo Seco definitely cut through the lead, when Denny's was in there, there were a lot of Denny's traffic using that street, correct? Why, why would, I guess my question, wouldn't any use in that site be using Arroyo Seco as a cut-through?
Is it?
Isn't it just a question of the volume?
A gentler.
Is that what we're talking about?
So I don't know. I can't, to me, there, it, it has seemed different. I'd like to have something there. I don't like it just empty. Denny's was great. We, we ate there. I can't speak to the traffic. All I know is that it is, it's picked up a lot, cut through. I have to, I have to put on my left-hand turn signal to get into my driveway. So I won't be passed on the left or the right. I mean, it's crazy, and there's no enforcement. So.
Okay.
The answer is changed. The answer is I don't want it to change more. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Mike McAndries. I've been a resident on Arroyo Seco since 1988. I also raised my kids on the street. I've watched all the changes. I've watched the traffic. We used to play in the street when I first moved in, because the traffic was not as voluminous as it is now. We're already concerned as residents about the traffic. I agree with everything that's been said here tonight. The speed, the inconsideration, literally, you drive out of your driveway, and people will pass you on either side. They don't just stop and let you move on. They will try to pass you. This is a residential street. But what I want to say is, I'm an accountant by training, and I'd like to see us focus on the numbers. There were a lot of numbers thrown out, thrown out here tonight that didn't really make a lot of sense. The Emeryville site is a 4,000-square-foot building. The Campbell site is planned to be a 6,000-square-foot building. Yet, I think the sales target or the traffic target was the same. Well, how can that be? And why would somebody build? The other thing really is disingenuous, is there's no question that the people who are planning to build a building on that site, they know exactly how many cars are going to come. They know exactly what their sales are going to be. This isn't something they're pulling out of, out of the air. They've got plenty of experience. The fact that they wouldn't offer up any of that data to us, so we could analyze it, is really disingenuous. The point is, 4,000 cars is probably not right. It's probably higher, 4,000 trips, I guess. It's probably higher. The second figure, the second number, it doesn't really make sense, is 80 cars. Out of all those trips, 80 cars are going to go on Arroyo Seco? That, that doesn't even make common sense. Arroyo Seco is a throughput to Campbell Avenue. From Lee, if you want to go to Campbell, and you don't want to go all the way down to Hamilton, you cut all the way through, and you go down Arroyo Seco to get there. It's already a cut-through. We already have the problem. We can't make it that much worse. And this is a fast-food restaurant on steroids. And good for them. They've got a product that everybody wants, but not in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, okay. Thank you for your participation. So I'll close, I'll close this session. And, by the way, just, Corey, I apologize if I didn't get you included earlier on some, on questionnaires. We'll, we'll make sure you're, you're included. Oh, yeah. The applicant may come back if they wish to speak for three minutes. Thank you. We're not going to make you. That's it.
There we go. This is going to be uneventful. I, we don't have anything to say. I just want to put it on the line.
Okay, does anybody have a question for the applicant? From this, from the commission? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to close that, and...
If I can just quickly, because it did come up during the public comment. So during the review period of this application, we did get a preliminary application for a new mixed-use housing project at the corner, just down the street, at the Hickory Pit site, three parcels around the corner, that the commission will be reviewing in two weeks.
Oh, okay. And pursuant to that, it's like, I, I was, I'd seen the application posted. And, and what I didn't bring up earlier, and I, is I don't know if our consultant is still here, but, but in the earlier, the 2019 traffic study, there was a section where they included background on projects that were potentially coming up, and they did some kind of data analysis based on that. And, and that wasn't in this one. And I'm wondering if there's, because of a different way that they were looking at it, whether there was a reason for leaving that out. So, but not 2019 when listed, you know, stuff that was going on in downtown, the Prune Yard, a couple other developments, and somehow that was factored in as data. And this time, you didn't do that, despite the fact that we actually, for example, have a potentially large development at the Hickory Pit Shell Oil, Shell Station site that's coming up. And then there's other potential developments like Prune Yard and, and along Bascom, you know, as, whether or not that wasn't necessary to do this time. Is there somebody at, at W Transit can answer that question?
Yes. Yeah, I'm still here, and I can address that. In the traffic analysis, there is a backgrounds condition analysis, which takes into traffic associated, say, with the Prune Yard expansion, and other known developments at the time that we did this analysis. So it is built into the traffic analysis. So after the existing conditions, we do look at background, which is other developments, and then we layer on the projects Background, which is other developments, and then we layer on the project scenarios. So it does, it is, it is included in the analysis.
Okay, I guess I missed it, it, it was actually listed in this, in this, in the study?
Uh, yeah, there's a section in the traffic report that discusses.
All right, maybe I just missed it. Okay, thank you. Um, let's go to commissioner comments. Again, this is the study session, we're not gonna be voting tonight. So each commissioner's get an opportunity to make some closing comments. Um, Adam, you wanna start?
Sure, I've got some notes. Um, I sense there's a great black trust in the room. See that everybody's here because they care. Um, I remember being here for the last application and there was a lot of, certainly a lot of passion in the room then. Um, primarily seeing the center around traffic, I just wanna mention. Like, two things for the folks here, like, first off, I, I really hear you that it is awful to have people. Blasting through your neighborhood at forty-five miles an hour. Um, city does have a neighborhood traffic cooling program, which does not just do speed bumps, they also have. Um, radar signs and if it's still a problem, the city does have funding and such to do this. If your neighborhood is unanimous about this, absolutely talk to the city about the neighborhood traffic calming program. Also, um, the city will be working on a multimodal program about how to make. Uh, biking, pedestrian, like getting around the city safer, starting, I believe, next year, please get involved with that. Um, I also hear a lot of, uh, distrust about how many cars there are actually gonna be. Um, to try and do a back-of-the-envelope calculation, um, if the store. Uh, brings in nine million dollars revenue per year, they're open six days out of seven. Um, and the average person spends sixteen dollars per visit, I Googled it, this insider says the average visit at Chick-fil-A costs sixteen dollars. Um, that means about eighteen hundred trips per day on average. I don't know if that's actually gonna be the number, but it is a back-of-the-envelope estimate. I think there's also a tendency to compare this against sort of an imaginary ideal that will have no traffic involved. Denny's can have no traffic involved, any use there is not gonna have no traffic involved. We did that with the Hickory Pit, it's been, I think, four years since, uh, we brushed off an application, it's been kinda sitting there. Actually, very excited to see what, what comes up here in two weeks. Uh, on the other hand, we do have a real question to talk about, like, does this fit the neighborhood commercial, commercial zoning, it is additional use permit for a reason. Um, obviously, we did not want to have drive-throughs, so it's not a drive. Um. It, it sounds like the overwhelming concern here is that there's gonna be too much traffic. I don't quite see that this is gonna be uniquely bad compared to the Denny's that was there or any other restaurant that would be there. It's a busy restaurant, it's going to be a. Shh, I understand that everyone has feelings about this, I promise, I am, I listen to everything everyone has said.
By the way, Adam, just, just to point out, we, we ignored some of the other things that, that was. That, uh, the, the staff was interested in feedback, it's actually on the board there, things like, um, the building design and some other.
I don't have strong feelings about that. Um, I'm glad that they're talking about, um, making it bike and pedestrian accessible, especially if it's gonna be right across the street from a giant apartment building and a giant hotel. People visiting the city would probably wanna dine out, that seems like crossing the street, that food would be a reasonable thing to do there. Um. Yeah, my, my, I think there's a tendency to compare this against a land use that uses. That does not use the land and has no traffic impacts, and I think it's not a realistic baseline to talk about. It doesn't matter.
I do. Commissioner Craig? Yeah, yeah. Boy, I didn't, you know, this is, this is a toughie, it's just an issue. For me, it's an issue, we're trying to be fair, we're just people like you guys and I do remember the, uh, I remember some of the people from five years ago. Uh, talking on the issue of, I know how tough it is, uh. I know how tough it is for our neighborhood, it's obviously a cut, those are cut-through streets, there are no question about that. And, you know, limited in what we can do there. But, you know, when I go to the issue of fairness, I, I guess I'm just, you know, uh, I am wondering. So our role is to advise, the city council makes the decision, we're advisors. The city council turned it down last time and I don't really see. You know, the big difference, this time, the big difference is that they changed from a drive-through to a non-drive-through, but. We've heard that it's lower value, but it, there's no numbers, it's, it's really pretty nebulous. Also, on the traffic study that was done in twenty nineteen, they did it in twenty nineteen, it was twenty twenty, uh. And, Commissioner, as this was mentioned, there was a couple of intersections that were level F. And that was the cumulative, and I think, I think, don't hold me to it if I'm wrong, I think it was including the in-and-out traffic. And that, and that traffic study back in twenty nineteen gave F, F to the Hamilton-Baskam intersection in the AM. And an F to the, uh, Highway seventeen Hamilton intersection in the PM, peak hours. This time, maybe five years later, we've got the same traffic study, same intersection, it's actually better now. Even though this project is showing more net trips. Although, as Daniel said, we're, we're taking out the Denny's trips from five years ago, so that's a big factor too. But yeah, so I guess I just get to the issue of fairness and I'm, I'm just trying to see, and also, oh, and also. So in the meantime, we changed the Sony, which is a crucial thing, and we, we actually downs it. We downs it, well, there was more that you could have done in intersection then that you can't do now, so. I, I guess only a fool would admit this, but I will admit that I did vote in favor of the Chick-fil-A project in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty when we voted on it. Uh. And, and the issue is, is traffic, I mean, that's the biggie, we, we all know that, and, uh. You know, every, every study, every time we have the traffic study, that the neighbors who live nearby. Uh, the numbers just don't make sense, they're always way lower than you think, like common sense would tell you. For some reason, that always seems to happen. And, you know, I guess we gotta go with the, with the science, we gotta believe the, the numbers, uh, the traffic consultants are the experts. They're unbiased on this, they have no reason to be one way or another. Uh, so, you know, I guess I, it's, it's just, it's a really, really tough issue, it's, it's a real killer for me, I think the design is fine, I think. I do think, even though Bascom is a real busy intersection, it's not gonna be pedestrian. Back, uh, we definitely should encourage the main entrance to be on Bascom. And, uh, there's, I don't know how much parking you can lose, but there should be more outdoor seating. I think there's a lot of possibilities for that, but the general design is fine. I do think, I do like the staff's idea, and I do think we can't hold Chick-fil-A to an ironclad agreement. That if we need to, um, extend that left turnway, that Chick-fil-A will pay for that, and there were no, numbers, and it's gotta be a pretty big cost, but. Uh, I think that would be the best thing to do, hold them to that, is. You know, you can see that, I mean, you can maybe get two cars in the queue now, I don't know. What, uh, with the, um, actual diameter that the traffic study used, but there's not much room, obviously, to turn there, we don't want Bascom being, being backed up. And then for Arroyo Seco, so, you know, I, yeah, I know, yeah, uh, Campbell Avenue does have the traffic bumps, ramps. Uh, just the Bascom, uh, they put them there on the way, and I did notice that when I was driving around today. Um, you know, as an engineer, I think, uh, you know, prohibiting light turns onto Arroyo Seco out of the, out of the driveway. For Chick-fil-A, uh. I think that's something that should be studied, you know, much more in depth, I think that's, that's a good option, that puts more traffic onto Bascom, but. Uh, you know, it's the residential areas, I think that we're most, uh, interested in. So, uh, but I guess I hit on you, yeah, I guess that's kind of where I'm at, thank you.
Uh, just a clarification. Um. When this comes up in front of Planning Commission, we, we, we vote for approval, not recommendation to the council, is that correct?
Correct, you do have a decision-making authority.
Okay, and then it can be appealed. Okay. Um, wanna go, you wanna go second last?
I can, I can go now.
Okay. All right.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So my, so, um, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I wanna ask a traffic engineer, Matt, can I ask you some questions? Thank you. And, um, the reason, um, the reason is, I wanna understand what are the possibilities, you know, what are? Things that we could do, I actually live on a street just like Arroyo Seco, no center divided, no, no yellow line and. You know, we get cut through traffic, we get, you know, quickly, and I wish some of these things would happen on my street, so. Matt, um, can we, for example, try a, you know, double yellow line in the middle? Because I know when you feel the lane is narrower, you slow down. Can we put maybe harder bumps, you know, so you really feel it when you go over, not a, you know, hump, but the actual. Bump, you know, can we put the, um, I think there comes a book runner, it's like a radar that says, this is your speed, this is. Twenty-five miles is what you're supposed to be going. And we do these things, and I know they cost money, but my question is, can those things happen? Um, if you wanna cut down the number of, uh, cars going through the neighborhood?
Speak to the man.
Go ahead. There you go.
I'll speak to the speedhums first. We would prefer to conform with what county fire specifies for heights. Uh, we don't wanna compromise emergency response times. So there's a standard for the heights of the, uh, the speedhums.
I see.
Okay. Um. Double yellow. It doesn't seem appropriate on a local street to have a, a yellow line all the way full length. Um, usually, it's, it's restricted to the fifty feet closest to the intersection. That's where you want no passing to happen. And what was the third?
Uh, speed, like a radar speed that shows your speed and.
It's always an option, there's an option. Especially if, if a street isn't eligible for traffic calming, be, consider that as an option.
How about, how about, uh, how about cameras, how about, uh, cameras where it will take your, um. Take your picture if you're exceeding the speed limit, please, certainly.
I don't believe, except for a handful of cities in California. Uh, speed enforcement with cameras is allowed.
Okay, so, so for traffic calming, are there other measures that city would have used other than these things that we just discussed?
Primarily, it's been speedhums.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so, um, so the reason.
Go ahead, if you got more comments.
Yes, I do. Um, but, you know, so, uh, going over the list of the items that the, um, planning staff wants. A feedback on, you know, I actually, I actually think they've done a great job with the layout, with the design. The la- land use and the neighborhood compatibility in the sense that it is, um, a restaurant. Um, it's the traffic impacts that I, and I think it's basically the biggest issue, you know, so. Uh, that's the only one that if there was a way to mitigate those issues and. As of this meeting, I'm not convinced there are. Um, uh, you know, otherwise, I think they have, you know, they have a good proposal. As long as the traffic impacts can be mitigated, but, um, you know, but, but that has to be part of the application, not. They're.
Should I speak?
Yeah. My comments are really around. Around the number of, um. Cars and trips, and I keep doing this math and I keep thinking I'm wrong, but, um. So it's, it's four thousand trips, which is two thousand cars a day. And then we say that that's gonna be a majority within a six-hour period of like lunchtime, dinnertime, let's say. Then we're talking about three hundred and thirty cars per hour. Moving in and out, which is five cars per minute. Which is really just like the amount of time it takes to get, like, there's gonna be constant traffic circulating and that's not even accounting for. Like, the time that people are gonna be there and eating and all of that, so. I just don't see how that amount of traffic is gonna work at that residential intersection.
Anything else?
Um, I don't believe we should be removing trees to try and accommodate. Uh, that. That's not going in the right direction without cities philosophy.
Okay, um, let me ask, Cory. Cory, are you there?
I'm here, I'll try and yell. Uh, I agree that I, I don't like that there doesn't seem to be a good solution for the. Queuing that I'm certain is gonna happen. If you go spend any time at the Chick-fil-A and Cupertino, um, it's very busy. Chick-fil-A in particular is a very popular restaurant, which is great for them. I don't personally feel it's the right fit for being this close to a residential neighborhood. Um, especially if we have to remove trees, create more traffic. Potentially have impacts to pedestrians and bicyclists, um. Yeah, as, as far as the land use and traffic impacts go, I just. I'm not convinced that there's any good solution for, um. This particular usage at this location, though I do, I do want to see something in that lot, so. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Fields?
Um, I think I'm stuck that I just don't think this fits the zoning. Uh, the, when I read what the intent of the change on that side of Bascom was over to neighborhood commercial. Uh, about sort of like separating out, okay, the left side is Prune Yard, bunch of businesses, the right side, that abuts homes, let's. Codify this, like, I feel like if I just go back in time and. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, this Chick-fil-A got proposed, denied at that site on the right side. Council staff put a lot of work into the zoning plan to say, we want this to be. Uh, neighborhood commercial, uh, I'm proud of the streamlining process because I think we did the right thing in that, that. Quick service was conditional and that triggers this process where we talk about it, does it fit? Uh, I don't think it fits. Like, full up, it's just the traffic impact is not there. I, I think this design is pretty bland, I think, again, knowing that we rejected this location, I, I'm underwhelmed by this. Presentation, I just, I, I don't find this to be a very compelling, uh, thing that's adding character to the neighborhood. Like, I'm not there, I, this just feels incompatible with what we're trying to do with the zoning, so. I, I can't get past that.
I don't wanna see us in the community go through, like, all this time and energy again for what we're looking at, which is. The same thing, more impact when it should be much less.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm not quite sure what I could see that would make me approve it at that site based on zoning, so. That's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. I'm the last guy, okay. So, um, just, just in terms of, of this holistic. Um, I know we didn't really talk about, I, I'm, uh, the design, I, I, you know, there were some choices on the design of the. If, if we were to approve this, uh, the building, I don't like the, um, tower look, okay? Um, I'm an earth-tone kinda guy, I, I, I prefer brick over stone, stone, too much stone. Um, you know, I, I was, I tried to get Denny's not to put a red roof on their new Denny's, so. But it didn't work, so, um, uh, I, I like something that, you know, it, I understand this is a chain and they have a look. And, and so, whatever you come up with is probably gonna be acceptable, but I, I have a personal preference in. And certainly, I would rather see a, a, a single-story thing, not with a big, uh, high, there was one picture with a big high tower-y thing. Um, uh, the patio in the front versus patio on the side, I don't care. Um, there was a question about the garbage, possibly moving the garbage towards Mass. There was a question about the garbage, uh, possibly moving the garbage towards Mass Bascom would be a good idea. Um, I think all the stuff like litter and lighting and safety and. Noise has been dealt with in the, in, in the discussion, in, in the presentation. That was put forward, um, but. I, I'm not comfortable with this. In general, like, uh, uh. Much like, uh, Commissioner Fields, uh, I, I don't think this is, this is not a great location and, um. For this, and it, and there's plenty, I mean, if it was a regular sit-down restaurant. You know, uh, like a Denny's, or, 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 uh, in my days, there used to be a Coco's on Hamilton. Um, whatever, those are acceptable, I think, because it's a much lower, you know, people go in, you know, there's a. Uh, they, they don't, uh, usually always fill up and there's, you know, there's a reasonable number of people going there. I, I, I don't think, um, I don't think, uh, this is a, a comment somebody talked about, uh. I don't think there was, uh. Uh, ways back when Denny's was open, so I'm not sure people were, you know, doing ways to go to Denny's, so, um. I, I think will people will be using ways to go to Chick-fil-A, I think, you know, Chick-fil-A is an exception here, just like. Uh, In-N-Out, they have this. Very successful eye volume brand that people want to go to. You know, not just at peak hours too, by the way, um, for some reason, people go. To these places sometimes later at night, and which brings me up to the hours thing, um. The hours presented with six AM to eleven PM, it seems to me Chick-fil-A, most of your hours are six thirty to ten. I, I would, if this were to go through, I would be strongly urging six thirty to ten. Not six to eleven, um. Uh, and that seems to be, uh, your common hours in many of your locations, um. Uh, I'm concerned about the neighborhood impact, I'm concerned about, uh, I, I don't really. I think it's, it is, you know, I, I, I believe what a lot of the neighborhood people are saying that this is already. Uh, um, uh, a way people shortcut and that, that will just get worse, um. I'm also concerned about overflow and congestion and parking on neighborhood streets and. Um, uh, I, I, I have a big concern about, we don't seem to understand the. The issue of, of online ordering and pickup, and what that, the implications of that are, is that. You know, multiple DoorDash drivers are going to be looking for places to park temporarily or. Go around the corner and come back, I, you know, I, I, you know, we just see it too much, right, uh, um. Uh, we see it all the time, um. I think the, the left turn issue is really a bad thing, okay? Whether it's left turn at the first spot. Uh, or left turn at Aprica, that's, that's, it's a, and, and there doesn't seem to be an easy mitigation. Uh, the, the staff is not recommending either. Um, either of those mitigations in terms of extending, uh, the length, where the first one would impact. The corner of Hamilton and Bascom, uh, going the other way, I, I get that. Actually used to have, I used to use the, it's closed down now, but I used to go there all the time and do that U-turn because. Because the, the cleaners, the nice cleaner people in, in that shopping center, I used, that's where I got my cleaning, so, um. I, I totally understand, uh, that, that area, so, um, uh, I don't want to cut down trees. I, I don't think the mitigation in general about using the left turn in some way is, is a good solution. And I also don't believe, w- we have limited mitigation, basically speed bumps. That's really the only mitigation that we offer. You know, the sign, the, the speed sign is a temporary thing, they put it up, they take it down, um. So, I'm not convinced that the, the, we have suitable mitigations. Uh, uh, for calming, I, 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 I don't think, um. Uh, there's not a easy solution with left turn, um, I don't think changing the, the signal lighting, it sounds based on what I read. That it's complicated, it affects the intersection, um, so I, I just have a whole problem with all that. Um. So, I, I, I'm. Of the mindset of some of the other commissioners in terms of this, this is not. Uh, a great location for this specifically, not for, uh. You know, it, 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 it could be any number of other food, either quick service or, or, or sit-down. Regular restaurants that would fit in that place as well as other retail, but I just think because of the nature of the success. Of Chick-fil-A and how, how, um. Popular they are, um, that, uh, uh, it's like I said, I, I looked it up and they're like the number one. Per store revenue in the country. For fast food, so, by far, I mean.
Thank you.
You know, it's just like crazy, so, um, so I'm not, I'm not, uh. Uh, I'm not. Leaning in favor of this at this point. And, uh, if anybody has any more comments, we can take them, otherwise. We'll close the study session, right? Okay.
Could we thank the public?
Yes, yes.
I wanted to mention, uh, if you go to the neighborhood traffic calming program page, there are a number of things other than speed bumps that they do offer. It appears that none of them are quite as effective as speed bumping, you know, we should encourage city council to, um. Legalize. Um, picking, uh, who speed down neighborhood streets, you can't just park somebody there to radar. Um, but that's kind of how it is over there.
Okay, I, I, I'll just mention about the mitigation, the mitigation happens after the fact. So the thing gets built, it gets operational, we see what the problem is, or if there's a problem, and then. The neighborhood has to put in for mitigation, i- it's, it's, you know.
Yeah, and in my mind, I would say like, if those are all options, there's plenty of places in Campbell that have traffic. Issues, so let's get them implemented where we already have a problem, rather than like talking about putting in a problem and then fixing.
Yes, okay, so, uh, I want to thank everybody who participated and came up and spoke. Uh, I personally read all the stuff that was sent in from advance, so, um, and I, I believe my, the other commissioners did as well. And so I, I, I thank you for your attention and your cooperation and. Um, we'll probably see you again at some point, and I'm going to close the study session.
Thank you.
Um, new business, commission discussion of APA California Conference. Is that, is that you, Matt?
Yes, it is, um, uh, I was hoping if. Uh, Ken can put something up. So make this quick, I know we've been. Here for some, some time now, um, so I had the opportunity to go to the. Uh, American Planners Associations, California Chapters Annual. Conference in, um. Riverside, um, and, uh, you know, our, our director. Rob Iswood was there, Larissa Lohman, Assistant Planner, as well as our intern. Uh, you know, were there and, um, so there were many, many sessions where they would, uh, talk about planning. Information and, um. Uh, techniques for, you know, dealing with different situations. Um, but the highlight of the, of that, uh, conference for me was when our staff, our planning staff. Received one of the highest awards. In California, you know, for, as a planning department. And, you know, it was, it was. So, um, so this is not, this is not among like small cities or medium cities, this is among. All California, this is comparing to LA, San Diego, San Jose, you know, big cities. Uh, Campbell got, you know, one of the highest awards, I think, it was like one to the end or. Or maybe to the end, you know, I mean, as a department, I think we got the, we got the best award for. Our, for, for playing department and then other people may have gotten some individual awards after us, but. But was a very, very, you know, was very proud, and yeah, now that's the picture, accepting the award and. Uh, you know, I just wanted to make sure I share that with you guys. Very proud. Great job, thank you, that's my report.
And the reporter, the, uh.
Just wanted to note that there was a little, uh, extra column in a recent issue of the Campbell Press, um, describing that and. Um, explaining what you guys done, so anybody who read the Campbell Press would, and got to my column, would, uh, get to hear about this.
Fantastic.
Rob, before.
Fair enough, they actually allowed us to speak, and it was funny, they had a, um, a button just like that, so. Most of my ironic staff always sits here and thinks, kind of how these people are going to use two minutes? And everyone who gave a speech had two minutes. Of course, I ran over and they did the whole trick of playing music at the end. Anyway, just saying, no, I kudos to our planners, it is a rare, uh, award and, and just to frame it, uh. Four jurisdictions I saw that have gone over the last ten years have been like LA, Sacramento and San Diego, so the city of the size is super rare. Kudos to our planners, they're very sharp. And very dedicated folks. Uh, the only thing I had to add is, uh, I'd have to announce our unhoused coordinator has started with cities, so this position was funded. For a three-year grant from a nonprofit called Destination Now. His name is Chris Miranda, he started about a month ago. And he'll be doing case management of our homeless unhoused population. Uh, city council did adopt, uh, some money for hotel vouchers and some other programs to sort of. Give him tools to help people get off the street and at least temporary housing. But happy to pass on his information, I know folks in the community, I'm see someone in need or someone who might. Have issues or whatever the issue is, but he's a resource for the next three years, just to sort of help.
How many unhoused do we have in Campbell?
Uh, the last point in time count, uh, I'd say approximately ninety, uh, two years ago it had gone up to a hundred and ninety, but the last. Counted had gone down. So that was according to data by the county last year. His name is Chris Miranda, M-I-R-A-N-D-A, his last name, and happy to pass on to the commission his contact.
But I have an announcement. Commissioner Buckbinder and I are re-upped for four more years. Of course, there was no competition. What are you going to do? So congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Um, I had a, two people I wanted to ask, yeah, staff, we have, they're short. We had a bunch of that meetings, just because of our amazing before efforts.
Uh, not sure, as you know, you still have these single-family homes that are coming to you that might be frustrating. As they're ministerial, but in terms of the streamlining, commercial effort, I don't think we see anything yet, I think it was just a lull in. Projects coming and projects going, so that, that does happen.
Um, which segues into my other question, so a significant number of our items involve single-family homes which are now ministerially approved under SB nine. Um, it's a lot of delays to applicants, it's a lot of staff time and so forth, might be worth catching your city code in the meantime, so we don't. Like, spend time on it until we're waiting to do our main major code overhaul? Or is it just that ingrained that it would take too much staff time, more staff time than we would save?
I, yeah, my, so, the senior planner who's sitting here is the one who's been working on it. Uh, I think pressure was about ninety-five percent done. And then what happens is it bumped up against the state legislator adopting much new laws, so we had a tactical decision to make to go ahead and. Bring this planning commission council, get it done, but then go ahead and do a redo for some new state laws in three months. So we, so. Let's go ahead and pause the effort, give it an extra two months to wrap in the new state laws. So, I think we're almost there, I can't promise you, you won't see. Another single-family house, but I know the, the fix is coming.
So when you say next year, you mean January of next year?
January of next year.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant like, uh, maybe next October, we're doing this for an entire year, okay, that answers my question, thank you.
I have a question, actually, so, um. A few meetings ago, there was a cell tower proposal, the exemption. To the height limit in the neighborhood commercial. Which the planning commission approved, I, uh, was. And then it was appealed and then rejected by the planning commission and. Counsel, thank you, and then in that process, quite a number of people brought up. The fact that other cities nearby actually do have in their code. You know, distances that cell towers need to be from residential neighborhoods and so forth. So, how do we move forward with doing something like that in Campbell?
We can, can do that, and I don't know, we may have actually already done something similar to that. But the problem was, this was a request for an exception because they were claiming a gap in coverage and a densification. And I would also add that we have since been sued over that, uh, uh, decision by the city council, so that is now in litigation.
Oh, oh, sued by city council?
No, we were sued as a result of the city council's decision, uh, the, the lawsuit is seeking to overturn that.
Sorry, it's the, the cell tower, cell tower.
Correct.
But I, I think what, what, what. And he was saying is that we, we should have something in our own, it's just so much distance RF wise for any town.
Right, and those can still be accepted if they show that there is a, a significant gap in coverage or a need to densify. Or improve their, uh, services. That's federal law.
One, one last item in the, um, in the conference.
But wait, can we get back to my question, so. But anyway, other cities have this, it kind of sets a framework for how applicants can think about this. And obviously shows the intent of the community and the city. Which is something we don't have, so how do we move forward with that?
I'll answer broadly, but. And the broad is, cities discretion over cell tower approvals. When they show they have to meet a coverage requirement is very. And I, I think there's some discretion we have on aesthetics, you know, like trees and types of trees and that sort of thing, but outright. Denying the ability of a cell tower to expand or land a new. Tower where they've documented that they need to cover, uh, I'll just say the federal government has, has taken away the, much of the discretion. So, Bill can jump in, while a city can, like Los Gatos or some of the others, belt these standards. It, it would not. It. A cell tower company could come in and if they document that regardless of those, they still need to be coverage. The city would be, it would be very difficult for the city still to deny the application. And, I mean, I'll fight, I'm spoken.
No. Even, even with regards to, say. Specific locations.
I mean, they, the, uh, the applicant does need to show that, uh, they, that there are no other available locations. Uh, and that gets to be a, a very messy factual issue, and usually they have evidence and we don't have. Much to rebut it, unfortunately, generally.
I mean, yeah, it's like. There's plenty of towers on PG&E sites and they're like, we couldn't put a tower on the nearby PG&E site, or it didn't work for these other reasons. Put a tower on the nearby PG&E site, or it didn't work for these other reasons.
They said that they went on the PGA, PG&E rejected. Look, you know, we, one of the things I thought about afterwards was, we didn't really ask them to prove that. We didn't really ask them to prove that they had been rejected from PG. Which seems to me that would be the question.
And, and we, we are getting into a discussion that hasn't been agendized at this point, so.
I think we should.
Okay, we're jumping.